...council for January the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty to order. We have a forum. Item three is items for review and discussion. Item three A is public works department. Three A one is a presentation of conceptual designs for Crossroads Park. Ms. Fitzpatrick? Glad to have you with us. Before you get started, we are anticipating a long meeting tonight, longer than we typically have. So, we have brought in sub sandwiches and drinks for anybody that would like them. So, anytime you feel the urge, have a sip. Appreciate all of you being here. Thank you.
I put together a presentation that will hopefully provide an opportunity to discuss and review of conceptual designs for Crossroads Park. First few slides are really going to be about existing conditions. This first one in red highlights the project site area on Main Street at the intersection of Third Street and Thompson Lake Drive. And then this diagram just shows how I've split the site into two sections, just for legibility for this presentation. The bulk of the design area will be in section A. And then this slide shows the existing utilities. And you can see by the legend, there's water, storm, sanitary sewer, some communications, and gas, all out there. So, that puts some major constraints on the design. So, for section A, this shows a sodded lawn area with some bench seating. In this area, the relocation of the Girl in the Tree sculpture from the Art Center, right here in the center. Some perennial plantings, also two site retaining walls, one over here to the right, that would hopefully alleviate some erosion issues and then sort of cap this project area. This one over here would require a guardrail due to the height with an evergreen screen in front of it here. And then the one over here would be more of an ornamental type retaining wall. It could have some signage, uplighting, some perennial or annual plantings as well. And then the shade and ornamental trees have been placed to not interfere with the existing utilities. And then some prefabricated planters placed along the existing sidewalk. And those could be incorporated into our downtown seasonal color program, changed out by seeders as well. And then this is section B, and because of the utilities concentrated sort of in this area here, you can see that this is a lot more simple, some more prefab planters along the sidewalk here, and then a few understory or ornamental trees placed so as not to interfere with the overhead power lines, uh, communication lines. And then the final slide is just a perspective to kind of translate those 2D designs into a 3D image so that you can kind of visualize what it would look like approaching downtown from, um, three forty-one Main Street area. So, the low retaining wall, put some signage, and then you would also be able to see the sculpture just above on the lawn space as well. So, if I get any questions, comments, revisions, anything you want to talk about at this time, I'm happy to answer.
Refresh my memory on the cost of this.
We haven't gotten the cost yet. This is just a conceptual design. The next step would be to have some...
We've had a price at one time.
We've had a price at one time, but this is considerably less than that price.
Good.
That you get. As you may remember, the previous one had much more extensive and extensive, uh, expensive graveling, had water feature, uh, had bigger box type of things, that type of stuff. Ms. Fitzpatrick's design, I don't mean to speak totally for her, but her instructions were that to number one, keep a general theme, that this is going to be a welcoming coming into Perry. So, you notice the welcome to Perry is kind of similar to what we have at the Welcome Park. Everybody familiar with the Welcome Park? The other type of thing is that you agreed that the, uh, Girl in the Tree artifact would be shifted over to this park, you know, once we are ready to go. The third thing was to have, uh, minimal maintenance requirements, but still having something attractive. This also is a park that people could walk to, but it's not intended. You may remember there's discussion before about people coming, a bunch of benches and all that type of stuff. You don't have anything in this park here because of the traffic, you know, that you have there, and you have, uh, tree growth, but a minimum to avoid disruption and possible relocation of various utilities. So, an answer to probably the mayor's next question. Administration recommends if this looks like okay, that we proceed and go to design and bid, and then when it comes back, you'll be able to check. We'll have a figure for you. The funding source for this project will be SPOLOST eighteen monies.
Are there going to be any type of walkways in this main park, or is it just going to only be grass and so?
There's an existing sidewalk, so...
But it runs down the side of it.
Mm-hmm, right.
Not, nothing into the park itself.
No, not that this is...
Not directed. I mean, she'll have some people walking.
The, the beaches there, one's a walk across the grass, right?
How we could place something if you're on? Some of, some of that type of stuff may be like in a later phase, depending on what the public actually does. You know, for example, if we wind up seeing that we have a lot of wear and tear on the grass over by the retaining wall because people are coming in and hanging up, then we'll, then we make some adjustments on that.
Will there be any type of signage denoting that this is Crossroads Park?
Uh, we could have that underneath or incorporate some way in the Welcome Perry.
I'd, I'd like to see that in some way, but other than that, I think it's great.
The, the only thing I worry about is just the grass areas become warm and muddy if people actually do use the area more than if it's just like, you know, Welcome Park up there has used a great deal for photographs and all that type of thing, but we have all the brickwork up there and all this stuff. I have concerns if it, if people start using it, it will, a little way, and it will create paths in there, so...
I guess the, um, sodded area shown here could be made into a plaza, concrete or brick pavement or something like that.
Or pavers or something like that.
Mayor, still recommend we wait and see if we can wind up doing it?
But you said, I could ask you, please?
It might be a path that just meanders through it from one end to the other so that if they do walk through, there's, you're not, they're not doing damage.
After what you say, of course.
Of course. Well, let me beg, you know, refresh everybody's memory. Welcome Park was part of an overall design that was intended to have people coming there for a function.
Right.
You know, like that mound, anything was originally going to be like a stage type of deal. I mean, it was planned from the beginning about having people come in here. This one is more of a green welcoming coming into downtown Perry. And that's why there isn't any additional parking there and, and that type of stuff.
Some of them is about on three forty-one. There's no parking there, no, no sidewalks.
That's right. But like I said, if we do wind up having use with it, then we can come back.
It's more, it's more for the aesthetics down there than it is actually as a functional park. It's just a, it's, it's no different.
Like a dressed up green space.
It's no different than the park coming in on San None there. You're talking about 2D.
Concept wise, yes, that's right.
Concept wise. I've used it, no one question.
The parado, the whole.
What questions do you have relative to this, for Ms. Fitzpatrick? Are you agreeable to move forward with the design phase of this and get the costing at this point in time?
Yes, I am, yes.
Good. Mr. Gilmore, you have the authority to go ahead and move forward with, coming up with the designing cost.
Thank you, Councilmembers.
Item three B is community development department. Three B one is presentations. Three B one A is an evaluation of Frank Satterfield wastewater capacity. Mr. Murph, it looks like you're up for the next four items.
Yes, sir.
Everybody get your sandwich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. The city requested that we take the wood back, increasing the capacity of Frank Satterfield Wastewater Treatment Plant. Our goal was at five NGD, and currently the capacity of the plant is three million gallons a day. So, we're hoping to be able to accommodate moving forward with increasing that capacity and relatively control the costs associated with that. We evaluated three options to accommodate increasing the capacity for that. The first option was basically, um, to upgrade all of the processes to accommodate getting an increase with five to five NGD average daily flow. And inclusive of that was new influent metering, which recently in the last month has taken a turn for the worse, so we added that to our evaluation. The influence screening, we need to replace an existing mechanical screen and do some improvements to the existing belt conveyor. The grid removal system, replace an aerated grid system that is currently not being utilized. Increasing or building a brand-new secondary clarifier, constructing a new filtration unit, and upgrading the chlorine contact chamber, all to get, again, another too many gallons a day of capacity. The estimated project cost to have all these upgrades complete was roughly six million dollars. This did include a contingency, because this is at an evaluation phase, that's a thirty percent contingency, which includes unknowns as well as engineering and permitting costs associated with that. The second option that we evaluated was to add a flow equalization. And the reason that we looked at this option is because right now, all the flow passes through the plant uninhibited. So, basically, all, everything that the system can take, it is taking currently, and we have some issues through the process where we have SVR basin that can handle all of the capacity and even more during deep flow, but everything down gradient of that is not able to handle that capacity. So, therefore, it has to be upgraded, which is what option one took a look at. In option two, we look at buffering the flow, try to equalize the flow down gradient through the processes to make them adequate. So, as part of this, we still had to address everything on the front end. The influent metering, the influence screening, the grid removal, all happens before it actually hits the treatment process. And then look at a flow equalization basin after your aeration basin in the facility. The filtration system that you have now just needed some more discs added to it, and then we still needed to upgrade the chlorine contact chamber. So, this option has an estimated cost, again with a contingency, of eight point one million dollars. The third option that we took a look at is, well, if we can't get to, um, five NGD, what can we get to in a more cost-effective manner? And we were able to determine that we could get to four point four million gallons per day at a much more reasonable, uh, cost per gallon as we're looking at this. So, we still had to update the influent screening, the influent metering, um, the filtration after the aeration process, and then the disinfection. And this has an estimated project cost of one million dollars to do that.
Excuse me a second. Can we switch to the next screen?
Yes, sir.
Shows the option three.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, with this option, this seems to be the most reasonable, to be able to increase the current capacity of the treatment facility without going through a lot of improvements and upgrades and really focusing on some of the things to get the immediate, immediate bang for the buck. And so, as a part of our recommendation to the city, this is what we have recommended to go with, to get an immediate increase of one point four million gallons per day, average daily flow, and have the upgrades that we know need to be done regardless. So, for any option, the first two upgrades have to be done for all options. The filtration already succumbs to flow that it cannot handle, so it needs to be upgraded, and then the chlorine contact as well. So, all items are necessary to be able to get more capacity, but this is the most cost-effective solution to be able to do that. So, we came up a little short on our goal of five, but we can increase to one point four NGD in a more cost-effective manner. Are there any questions associated with this?
What's the timeframe? How long does it take to, because that's very...
So, the process would start with permitting and engineering design, so we would have to work with EPD and develop a set of plans. Right now, EPD is bottleneck across the state. They've just got a lot going on and aren't staffed enough. So, we could expect probably about twelve months from the time that we would start the project until getting approval from EPD to proceed with a bid for that. And then this would probably have somewhere in between the ballpark of a nine to twelve month construction period. The majority of that would be lead time on the equipment. Right now, we're looking anywhere from three to five months on just delivery, once it's approved, for a lot of the equipment that we would be specifying. So, you're looking at another twelve months, nine to twelve months. So, from beginning to end, from those to proceed, roughly twenty to twenty-four months is a good, good estimate of when you'd be able to have that permitting capacity available.
Where are we running today? I mean, is that actually what we're running, or is that our capacity?
Two seven, two eight, two five, and then...
But with the kind of, with the kind of growth we've got coming at us right now, we're talking about twenty-four months away before we have this additional capacity, so it's going to have an impact on our ability to continue our growth.
I have a question about the grit removal. And I, you know, I know absolutely nothing about what you're talking about, but I just noticed that it's missing an option three.
Yes, ma'am.
And just, just, you know, we're going to keep some grit, or?
No, ma'am. Well, actually, at that capacity, you're not required to upgrade your existing grit system. You already have one in place. What we're talking about is replacing the original system that is no longer active to get to five NGD. But at four point four, you do not have to have that available. And so, your existing system can't handle that grit.
What questions do you have relative to these three options? Do we receive a timetable when we have to go with one of the other options anyway?
Well, um, I think that really depends on the growth of the city. I believe my last presentation talks about the east part of the city service area, which if the city opts to bring that potential flow in to Frank Satterfield, I believe that you will definitely get a bottleneck at some point. And I think at that point, you're talking about a much greater upgrade, not just five NGD much.
Were you, like, you plan all together?
That was one of the discussion points that we had, yes, sir, with potentially at some point in the future for growth in the area, either another plant or doing a significant upgrade of Frank Satterfield. Now, when that may occur, it's all development based.
So, that mean that you plan to change that alignment, right? You're going to do upgrade to make it larger and get a bigger capacity?
Well, um, no, sir. At this time, I believe the system can get the flow to it because it currently is, especially during periods of rain. Now, ESG has done a great job in the past of correcting INI issues. So, when it rains, we're still getting some pretty good peaks. And what is happening right now with the facility is when we get a good rain, it's becoming inundated, and so we're getting more than its ability to treat, but the pipes are bringing it to you. So, I don't believe that you have to upgrade all of your pipes throughout the city at this time, but we have looked at a few projects, the Cambridge, in the past, Cambridge Drive, that super upgrade, it eventually will need to happen. And then some of the others further out, Bear Branch, uh, pump station, which again, I'll bring up when we talk about the service area.
So, with the rain flow that we're getting, I guess with the capacity in, it's a way we can slow it down, or is that possible? I didn't, maybe I need to talk to the chair. How that work?
Well, again, I think a lot of that is just keeping up to date with your infiltration and flow program that you are definitely active with and eliminate a lot of those issues. The city's very proactive in that stance.
So, really, you're saying we're increasing our capacity about fifty percent with, it's going to effectively buy us some time until we can determine our growth rate on what's going to be needed in the eastern, at eastern quarter or the service toward the area?
Yes, sir.
But that's coming if we continue our growth.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, Council, I have a comment. Just for clarification, the wastewater plant actually handles the flow very well. It can handle up to eight, ten million gallons a day. The, what this is, is it's the permit from EPD that we're allowed to only discharge three million gallons a day. So, by doing these things, they will give us a, a permit that will allow us to do four point four. And, and that's what we need because otherwise, we'll, we may end up in a permit violation with the state, and that's, that's the purpose of this. It's not that our plant's not functioning at that capacity, or our pipes aren't doing the job they need to do. All that seems to be working. I think the, the option three here is a good option because we get the most bang for our buck, and I think that's a good starting point for us.
So, what kind of timeframe do we think that will buy us, though?
Well, currently, right now, we've had some, and Travis may want to speak to this, he keeps up with the permits now, but I know that we've had some influent violations through this year, this past year, especially during rain events. I'm sure in the next year, we're going to continue, in these larger rain events, we're going to have some more inflow violations. Inflow violations are not necessarily a fining violation. It's when we have these potential sewer spills, or if the plant gets upset and blows out where you have solids or something like that leaving the plant, then you get into a, a permit violation that's going to have some fining or a consent order. We are not at that point yet. I don't know what that volume, Travis may be able to speak to that more, have any comment?
Basically, the only thing I could say is, over the last ten years, if our permit was at four point four million gallons, we would not have busted permit at any time. We've busted permit the first two weeks of this year because of rain, so if we were at four point four, that would not be the case.
Mr. Gilmore? Yes? Any comments I can tell?
Just one. As far as I'm concerned, I think council needs to authorize going on the option three right away for the wastewater treatment plant to start that designing permitting process, since, as you heard, that's going to take twelve months or so to do. And then the plan on not doing those improvements as well, but the other two options are all very nice, but in the manager's position, we are not, we can't afford that right now.
Where will the funding come for option three?
Option three will probably be some mix between monies in the Water and Sewer Fund right now, SPOLOST, and some type of bond funding when you get to the actual construction. But the first phase will be handled between SPOLOST and the Water and Sewer Fund itself. If I may?
Yes, sir.
As you go through each of these, Mayor and Council, it's incredibly important to make your decision on which way we're going to start going. I, I mean, it's kind of obvious enough, I want to point that out. You know, when you're talking about the engineering and the permitting process that Ferk was talking about, every one of these projects is a long range type of project, so...
Another one, probably the thing I think we talked about earlier, the, the growth of the city and the way we're going, and do we have a gauge, like you were saying a while ago, that we implement, you know, we're going back, like, it's going to take twelve months to do something. So, as the process of the city begin to grow, and if we have to have a gauge to gauge ourselves so that we will not run into trouble, but we'll keep, it would stay...
Correct. Yeah. For, for example, you have a series of these, but we'll use, for example, this plant, this process right now. You give the okay, the designing, the permit stuff is all done, okay? We have a recession. There's no particular growth. All right, well, that drops off the timeframe on when we have to do the construction. See what I mean? Or there may be some other option, other issues that wind, coming up, or whatever the case may be. But I think the important thing is that you all, as policymakers of the city, have determined here's where we're going, this is the process, and here are the benchmarks. Now, remember, we use benchmarks on, um, the, well, actually, going back several councils ago, to the northeast outfall, when they constructed that to take care of Matt Arthur School and all that stuff up there, where we had the sewer main that came in along, I think it's Sanford Road, and coming down on forty-one, there were a series of benchmarks that were done there, depending on when you had to do certain upgrades based on when subdivisions or whatever comes in. You've done the same type of thing on the southwest section of the city, where Perry Preserve is, I'm not sure what they call it now, but the old Perry Preserve subdivision that's out right up there.
You're not concerned that the cost, we're already so close to the maximum, we're, we're at two point seven now, and we're putting, and our permit is for three?
It's kind of a loaded question. Quite honestly, compared to the trade-off and the money, no, I'm, I'm not concerned. As long as council is okay, I'm taking the process and going forward. I'd be very concerned if you all sat here and said, "That's very nice," and then nothing was, nothing was done, because of the timeframes. Kind of going back to Ferk's point, councils have taken a very strong position about going in and addressing the infiltration issue with our sewer lines. That has extended the life of our plant at least five or eight years' time because you did that, okay? But there's a limit on how far we can go with that, particularly when you have the additional growth, uh, coming in. And so, you know, you all have been very proactive about saying, "Okay, where are we? What's our upcoming situation? Where is it that we need to go?" So, that's why we're here tonight, saying, "Okay, we're at that point now, it's time to make some decisions." But I think we can work with the timeframe fine, as long as everybody's aware of what's going on with it.
What questions do you have? I think these things couldn't ease, let me do it so far, to keep moving.
Additional questions? Are you ready to move forward with the recommendation? If concurrence from the council, move forward with your request on option three.
Yes, sir.
Next is evaluation of the Airport Road Water and Booster, and Booster Farm. Mr. Murph?
I would assume, unless he has an interest in sewer water, but I doubt it.
Yeah, we wanna do that.
I would.
If you would like.
I think if you would like.
If that's okay with Mr. Murk, we can move to another agenda item. Judge Freeman, I take it that you're here to talk about municipal court?
I am, thank you, sir.
Or a possible new municipal court?
Yes, sir.
So that's an item that we'll be talking about later on, and we'll love to hear what your comments are.
Well, I appreciate that. I heard y'all were having a meeting tonight, and my clerks said it might be advantageous for me to come down and give you my two cents worth on it. Myself and Judge Deb Wilder have had a chance to talk with the clerks, to look at some other courts around the area, get an idea of how other municipalities are handling the situation. As you know, we have floated from just up the hill and moved down here for a period of time, held court in the city hall, and I know y'all all got to see how active and busy our court is on a given night when we have court. At present, we are meeting in the Superior Court, and they've been gracious enough to give us a courtroom to use over there. Our clerk's office has moved from down the hall, out of the closet, back into where we were over in the police department. With that in mind, kind of as a wish list and thoughts about a future court, there are a few issues that we think are important. First and foremost is that I feel that our courtroom, wherever that may be, and our court clerk's office need to be in the same location. At present, our clerks have to carry a large amount of things from our office over to the courthouse and back, which also involves a large amount of stuff we have stored over in the courtroom that has to go in and out because that's not our permanent courtroom, which is really unfair to them, as well as just the volume that we go through. I was trying to get some numbers, and as a, for instance, we had court last Wednesday for an arraignment night. We had approximately 125 people show up for court. We had more than that on the docket, we could've had more than that show up. But we had about 125 who showed up. We have tried to streamline our arraignment process to try and make it so the not guilty pleas actually don't even have to come in and stand in front of me there, meet with the clerks, meet with the prosecutors, and actually don't even get physically into the courtroom. That accounted for about 15 people. So that means we had, you know, 100, 110 people that actually came before the court that I actually had to interact with. So when we talk about having a courtroom, as we ran into in this space when we were meeting here, accommodating 115 people is, we need more space. So that's one consideration, is whatever courtroom we end up with needs to be able to accommodate those sizes. We have been fortunate enough to have Judge Deb Wilder as an associate judge, and there's been discussion about possibly adding another night. But we've done a good job to get it down to the numbers we've done. But even if you add another night, that gets into, that raises its own concerns. So I know there's been some discussion about the fact that a state court may be built adjacent to the Superior Court over at the main courthouse, and that we could possibly use a courtroom there. I'm good with that. I think that's a good option, a good use of funds, if it can meet our needs. That's, as I said, we were meeting in the largest Superior courtroom they have. It was standing room only, and we still had people out in the hall. There are certain requirements that I have to give certain oaths and explain things to people. So there's a point in time where we have to get everyone from out in the hall into the Superior courtroom we're in now. And as I said, it's completely full, the aisles are full. So size is one concern. But the other issue is if we're using a state court courtroom, if we wanted to add nights or do other nights, that creates scheduling problems. And I would not like it if they were still located somewhere other than adjacent to that state courtroom. So those are the main concerns I wanted you to be aware of. We're working on a report so that we had in the works before we knew y'all were having this meeting, Judge Deb Wilder and I, just kinda give you an overview of how the year has gone, the number of cases we've been able to handle, the different types of cases we've been able to handle. But as far as for your future planning, I wanted you just to have a snapshot of it, which was Wednesday night, about 125 people. And transporting everything we have, moving everything around, having to get the computer systems, the printers, the files, file storage is incredible. Ideally, we would love a very large courtroom where we can handle a lot of people, clerk's office adjacent to it. We'd like space where the probation office can meet as well. They're currently using one of the council rooms next to the courtroom in the Superior Court. So when we meet with a person, if they're guilty and there's probation, they can immediately go next door. But we need enough space for people to be waiting while the probation office is handling them. And ideally, we'd have a place where prosecution can meet with people to try and work out some plea deals and make things go quicker on the given night. And it'd be nice if the judges had a place as well where we can, presently, we're going into the law library for the Superior Court when we're not on the bench. And that's where I can keep my robe and change, but also give us a chance to come in and get everything if we need to meet with prosecutors, meet with defense attorneys outside of the courtroom. So on a magic wish list of what we would like to have, those are the concerns that I've heard in talking to my staff and talking with the other judge and in looking at what we're doing. Just wanted y'all to kinda, for what it's worth, take that as advice, man.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
My pleasure.
Council members, what questions do you have for Judge Freeman?
If it was your birthday, how many square feet would you like to have?
How big's the Superior Court? Double the size. I mean, I'm a little flippant, but in all honesty, if you think of the current Superior courtroom, which is much larger than this room, we're not really fitting in it. One of those issues has to do with, in my opinion, how those courtrooms were designed. There's a whole lot of space at the front of those courtrooms for lawyers to walk around that is wasted space, in my opinion. I would probably double the amount of benches or seats that they have in courtroom three over at the Superior Court. That may be able to be done in that space, as far as the actual courtroom, maybe a little bit larger. But as far as what we have on the bench, typically, setup was a workable setup because you have the judge on the bench. I have one of the clerks sitting beside the judge. We have another clerk who's also handling paperwork. We have someone who is making sure all the things I say are put into the computer and set up, and we have someone collecting the fines and fees. So we're about six, five or six people just from court staff that have to be able to be at the front of the courtroom or in close proximity for me to be able to do what I do. So that does not mean you have to have all that space for lawyers to walk around that they have in that setup. Obviously, we don't use juries in our courtroom. So it could be accommodated in about the size courtroom they have over there, as far as raw square footage just for a courtroom, if it was designed appropriately. On top of that, I think you need the square footage, as I said, at least for their offices, their file storage, which y'all can tell me what that is. Obviously, Marion and Reagan know much better than I do the day-to-day activities of the court and what they would require, as well as the meeting space for probation. We sometimes have three probation officers meeting with different people, so we need enough place to accommodate that, as well as the people who are waiting. One other concern I didn't mention earlier is that when we go to training for the Municipal Court Association, they talk about the fact that, as with y'all's meetings, our court is supposed to be open to the public. If John Public wants to walk in and sit and watch what I'm doing up there, he's supposed to be able to. Right now, I have family members of defendants who are being, having their case heard, who are having to wait out in the hall because I don't have room to put them. And that's not how it's supposed to be. Ideally, we would have enough for every defendant, every family member, and anybody else who wants to walk in off the street. You know, as I said, magic wish list, that's it. So I don't know that I exactly answered your question, but I'm giving you what I can based on what we've experienced. Yes?
Any other? We have an agenda item coming up where item three dash nine is going to be discussion of construction of the new city hall and municipal court. And this is the feedback that we were hoping that we can get for a basis of those decisions as we start moving forward, and so.
And if I may, one more thing, that has to do with parking. Obviously, if I'm running 125 people, plus family members, plus attorneys, plus police officers, deputies, state troopers, probation, you know, we're easily talking minimum 150 people on arraignment night that have to be able to park. I think that number's probably even higher. So that's one of the constraints we have with this. I know it's been proposed about this location, that there's not enough parking in this parking lot or adjacent to handle the load we have on a given night. So that's something that has to be taken into consideration. I don't know what the answer to that is, but something I hope y'all will keep in mind as well.
That has been brought up, so.
Yes.
Any additional questions, if you can, sir? Thank you, we appreciate your input.
My pleasure.
We'll take that under advisement as we start discussing that.
Thank you.
And you guys are welcome to stay and talk about our sewer plant, it's gonna be very, very interesting.
As raven as that is, I have a one-year-old baby at home who'd be happy for me to come and join you. But if y'all have any other questions or any concerns, by all means, myself, Judge Deb Wilder available, and Marion and Reagan are welcome information.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We sure appreciate you coming this evening.
Thank y'all.
Thank you for indulging that change. Mr. Murk, thank you. We really appreciate your consideration for that. Now, back to three B, one, H dash V is the airport road water pressure evaluation that you were mentioning.
Yes, sir. The city had asked us to take a look at some issues with water pressure out on Walton Trace, Walton Chase Airport Road area, the farm subdivision, if you're familiar with that. Basically, having issues during peak demand of having water pressure out there. And so, as part of our evaluation, we took into account the existing booster pump station that is on Highway 341. We looked at the tank at Thompson Road. We looked at the water plant number two, the capacity and pressures there. And we came up with four options that we evaluated based on feedback that we had gotten from the city. The first option was to upgrade the existing booster pump station. And that seemed like the most reasonable option to evaluate first. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, we were able to determine that if the existing booster pump station, we could add jockey pumps, we could add some new distribution piping and things like that. But what we would've run into by increasing the pressure from that booster station out to Airport Road, we would potentially be causing issues at the Thompson Road tank. Water sitting there and becoming stagnant and having issues with water quality. So you're taking one corrected issue and you're creating another from that. We did not feel that that was a great option in doing, in doing just that, is what we had in option one. So the second option that we looked at was to add a new booster pump station near the intersection of Airport Road and Perry Parkway, adding jockey pumps to get the water pressure up. One of the things that needs to be understood is just because the water pressure in your faucet has increased, that does not necessarily mean that the fire pressure, the fire flows in the area are adequate to meet the fire department's standards. And so that's one of the other issues that we are trying to overcome. And your booster pump station would be able to do that. Estimated cost for this, which would include property acquisition and the booster pump station itself, is roughly $600,000 in doing that. The third option that we evaluated was putting a new elevated tank along Airport Road. The required capacity of the tank would need to be 200,000 gallons. This would also have a new booster pump station associated with it to pump the water up to the top of the tank and out to your distribution line. The estimated cost for this was roughly $1.58 million. The benefits to this is, this would allow that if there's any mechanical issues in the system currently, having an elevated tank in the area would overcome those potential issues. That is above and beyond what option two would be able to do. The con to this alternative is that now you've added an elevated tank along with a booster pump station, therefore you have higher maintenance costs, operations costs. And so it's more of the long-term impact to the, to the area that you would have to consider by going with this potential option. The fourth option that we looked at was adding a larger elevated tank, not just to address the problems currently on Airport Road, but to be able to provide additional capacity for growth in that area if the city chooses to consider that. And so what we would be looking at is a tank at the intersection of 341 and Perry Parkway. It would have the capacity of 500,000 gallons with a new booster pump station. The same benefits as option three, but again, you have 500,000 gallons of capacity as opposed to 200,000 gallons of capacity. So therefore, an estimated project cost is a little less than $2.3 million in doing that. So a lot of the recommendation, the city input, as far as what the idea of growth out in that particular part of the city service area may be in the future, and do you wish to jump on that hurdle at this time? Eventually, if there is growth in that area, it will have to have some assistance. There's also a potential opportunity, and Chad and I were discussing this right before the workshop started, was successfully raising the Thompson Road tank to overcome some of those water quality issues that may be, and then upgrading the existing pump station. But there again, we're gonna have issues to overcome with building a larger tank next to it, raising it above while keeping fire flows in the area and people's service online. The cost with that potential is gonna be just as much as option three or potentially greater, and you're not getting any additional capacity out in those areas. So that's something that we can take into consideration. But to offer a true recommendation, really looking at growth as the difference between options three and options four. But the most cost-effective solution right now to benefit Airport Road as far as water pressure and future, and fire flows, is option number two, an existing booster pump, a new booster pump station at Airport Road and Perry Parkway.
Can we purify enough water from deep there?
Yes, sir. The capacity of the plants is not an issue, especially once the Frank Satterfield new plant comes online. You'll have the capacity to handle it.
We've already got growth in that area, do we not? Did they not double the size of the farm recently for the new addition?
I do believe they had a second phase, again, yes, sir.
We've not seen any permits there yet, but yes, they have, they do have. So we're option two, help handle that? Or are we gonna be back in the same issue that we're in today?
I think the future growth is gonna be above and beyond what the farm subdivision can handle. I think it would be, another subdivision would have to come in or maybe some type of development as a result of that airport as it grows in the future. So again, I think this is taking care of option two, takes care of the immediate need, more than likely not the long-term need for the area. Now, whether that's five years or 20 years, it's always, always the gamble.
Council members, what questions do you have relative to this project?
What is your recommendation? Five years or 20 years?
I would say at this time, from my understanding... I would say at this time, from my understanding, please, any other department heads correct me, but the majority of the growth in the future that I would potentially see is not overwhelming in that area. I think the majority of the growth that you'll see in the future will be to the east. And so, I would recommend option two at this time, just based on what we know now and not what we're trying to guess on. But again, I may not be privy to everything.
Mr. Wood? Mayor, I just wanted to point out, it's not just, I think as far as growth in this area, we're not looking necessarily at just residential. This is where Sandler is located, and I think there's at least one other site that's identified by the Development Authority for potential industrial site. That may, there may be others identified there. So, it's not just residential growth that could...
And Sandler's already announced that they're doubling the size and capacity, and so I don't know what impact that has on this.
Sandler should be okay. But if, yes, if Mr. Wood suggested if there's a bigger development coming out there in that area, then I would definitely take a look at servicing your long-term needs.
Thoughts, Mr. Omar?
Yes. Number one, I think you ought to, again, go ahead for the design and if there's any permitting involved, for the option number two. All the other options, I think, need to sit and wait until we see what happens out there. I mean, if a lot of it is development, that goes back to the Houston County Development Authority or the Peach County Development Authority, where they can use their bonding capacity to help pay for these tanks that have to go in. I myself, other than what's currently approved for the farm, do not see much residential development coming in out on that area, and certainly nothing compared to what we have on the east side of town. You know, there's a whole bunch of issues out there. One is the airport, you know, the restrictions with the airport. The second is that you have two different counties, you know, and sometimes that's a concern, you know, for the marketing people and what it is that they're going to do. Other than the Farm subdivision, which came in a while back, you know, we have not been approached about any other activity out in that area. I realize things could change, but a lot of the property owners surrounding there have not, as far as I know, have not given any indication that they want to switch over from their agricultural type of uses in the bigger lots, you know, for any time to develop. Plus, there's a lot of other infrastructure work that has to be done out there, like streets and all that type of stuff, before you start to get anti-growth. You know, I mean, I think the primary reason for the, you know, what we have out there is, one, Perry Parkway, and then, two, the airport, you know, itself.
And I think you're right. If we see a large industrial growth out there, I think they're going to have to bring their own water capacity to take care of those industries.
Right. Or we work with them in some partnership.
Some type of partnership to bring their own captive water system, I would think so. Any additional questions? Mr. McFerrin?
I have a comment just for the good of the group. In option number two, where we put a new booster pump station in, I see that to myself as being a phased option. If you put a new booster pump station in, you move forward with that, and you say 10, 12 years down the road, 20, whatever, you decide you need a water tank. You can put that water tower in and then use this booster pump station or rehab this booster pump station to service that tank and fill it. So, it would be kind of a step in that direction, from my opinion. But is that, would that not work?
It would.
And this will solve the water pressure problem that they're having?
The immediate.
Will it accommodate fire flow requirements?
It will definitely help with fire flow. But fire flow is dependent not only on pressure, it's also dependent on volume. There is a 12-inch water main out there feeding Airport Road, which produces a lot of volume. Increasing the pressure on that will definitely make fire flows better. In all locations, they may not be perfect, but they'll be much better than what they are.
Thank you. Council members, are you ready to move forward with option two, that has been recommended here this evening?
Yes.
Cost of 590, estimated cost of $591,500.
Does that happen to continue? See, does it?
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay. Mr. McWhale, we have consensus to move forward with the design base on option two. Item 3B1C is the evaluation of Tauton Road sewer options.
Mr. Murk? Yes, sir. If you recall, in November, we were able to give a presentation to Mayor and Council on this, which was stirred up by a development right at the corner of Tauton Road and 127. Currently, it is not served by sewer, and so the city asked us to review potential options to provide that particular parcel sewer, but also to take a look at the future needs for growth through the city's service area. So, the first option that we looked at was to allow the particular parcel, roughly 70 acres of service area that would be fed by the city system, to get back to Wind River Pump Station that would then feed to Bear Branch here, and from Bear Branch would come along to Perry Parkway, and from Perry Parkway would come and end up at the Frank Satterfield Waste Water Treatment Facility. In doing that, we had upgrades that would have to happen at Wind River and the force main leaving Wind River, Bear Branch Pump Station, the Bear Branch Force Main, the Perry Parkway Pump Station, and the Perry Parkway Pump Station Force Main. Would all need upgrades associated with that. It was discussed with the city, and at that time, did not seem like a viable option because we have taken capacity away from that particular system that is dedicated to other parts of the service area. So, in that, we looked at option number two. Option number two would be a much larger service area, 1,100 acres. Right here, we would install a gravity sewer line down a perennial stream to a new pump station that would then pump that flow, a new force main, over to the Bear Branch Pump Station. In doing that, all the downstream improvements would still have to be made at Bear Branch Pump Station, the Bear Branch Force Main, again, at Perry Parkway Pump Station, and Perry Parkway Force Main. But we were able to serve 1,100 acres as opposed to 70 acres, much more palatable for the cost associated with doing all of those upgrades. Option number three, taking a look, now we're servicing 7,800 potential acres. Now, all of that is not developable. There are some streams in waters of the state, wetlands, but this would serve the majority of it, and we would start a gravity line at the Tauton Road 127 intersection roughly, and follow gravity sewer all the way down to Malsi Creek, and then Malsi Creek to a new pump station, at which point would pump via force main over to the Frank Satterfield Waste Water Treatment Facility. In doing that, with this potential option, is the upgrades that would be required on the Bear Branch and Perry Parkway pump stations and force mains would not be needed as a result of this developed, potential development in the area. So, it would be new infrastructure. Looking ahead even further, so now, what this service area would be is roughly 13,000 acres of the city service area, again, starting at 127 along Tauton, running a gravity sewer down Malsi Creek, cutting behind Purdue Farms over to a piece of property that is owned by the Houston County Development Authority here, having a new pump station, then pump via force main over to a gravity sewer system at Frank Satterfield. The highlight, again, is none of the improvements would take capacity away from the Bear Branch, Perry Parkway, so therefore those would not be, would not need to be upgraded as a result of this development. And if the city ever wanted to expand their service area to accommodate more along 341 and outside of 341, this particular piece of property would be a fine location for a new wastewater treatment facility. So, the idea is that you would design the pump station that would pump in the interim over to Frank Satterfield to be your new inflight pump station of a wastewater treatment facility.
Is Frank Satterfield about to pass and handle all that?
With the new upgrade, yes, sir. And development wouldn't occur overnight. So, let's just say for all intents and purposes, you have two years to get Frank Satterfield's 1.4 million gallons a day, more capacity than it has now. That is a lot of residential neighborhoods that would have to come online, commercial properties within the next two years to inundate that capacity. So, in doing that, as development, but I can say this, Mr. McWhale, putting this here is gonna spark a lot of interest, and it's gonna get some things moving forward. And so, therefore, it wouldn't be probably too much further before council would be up against the decision to do a major upgrade at Frank Satterfield or proceed with looking at a new wastewater treatment plant in that particular area to accommodate the development.
But you're not talking about in the next three to five years.
No, sir.
I mean, this is a very long-term view of what we're gonna do with our service delivery area over there.
Yes, sir.
And I would think that as we talked previously, you're talking about phases. We could phase any part of it, and as we continue to grow, the decision will be made by people long after I'm gone of whether we're gonna put a, you know, a new water treatment plant or sewer treatment plant down there.
Yes, sir.
But you're building the infrastructure to accommodate if that decision's made.
That's correct. And I have, I have experience with this, with another one of our municipal clients, the same exact thing. They started this process back in 2007, and they're just getting to building the plant right now. So, 12 years. But they put the infrastructure in place to be able to accommodate that. And it was dependent on growth. So, when the growth came, they were ready. Just a summary, option two, again, 1,100 acres of service area, roughly $9 million. Option three, which was 7,800 acres, 13 million. And option four, which is for the 13,300, that's currently in the city's service area of 21 million. And again, that could be phased out, and it's more for planning purposes at this point.
Questions, council members?
Your recommendation is?
That's a, I'm looking at Chad right now. That is a tough one, but I can say this, I would think that options three and four puts the city in a very good position to accept development as it comes and not be forced into making reactive decisions. Options three and four give the city a lot of flexibility, a lot. How would we pay for options three and four?
We would pay for options three and four through bond financing or impact funds, from Futures Plus money, from surcharges, from whatever it is that has to be taken with the primary focus that the bulk of these costs will have to be paid by the new customers that are coming on, not, I mean, there'd be some, but not dependent on all the existing customers, because the existing customers are not causing this issue. I guess in the next question, it may or may not be coming, I think council ought to say we're going with option four and start planning. I mean, we're not gonna have to pay $21 million tomorrow, that's gonna be, that's gonna be far off. I think the primary thing is, is that, well, just like was talked about, the deal about option three or option four, the major thing, Burke, could you put up, yeah. See that green proposed gravity sewer line? That is the key. That is the primary animal there, because that pulls all this additional load off our existing system on Bear Branch, coming down into Perry Parkway and all that type of stuff. The other advantage with that is if we need to, we can shift some of that other existing growth up there. Not being an engineer, I understand, but shift some of that other stuff, like Wind River, if we have to, take some of that capacity and start putting that, coming down on that. Now, the question would be, well, do we only go down to, was it Saddle Creek, I guess, or whatever, or go to 341? Well, council members, as far as your manager is concerned, you might as well bring it down to 341, because that's gonna wind up, what I think's gonna wind up, I totally agree with Burke about this, is gonna be an acceleration, but you're gonna start seeing jumping on both sides of that, coming like we're saddle, Stonebridge subdivision, so that land out there on Saddle Creek, you know, the Nun property and all that type of stuff. Once they start finding out about the options for sewer and all that type of stuff, I think it's not gonna be just coming down north-south, but I think also in that area as well. So, if you have this planned, you can have certain phases, you can have, you know, adjustments that you make, but the overall grand plan, I would recommend to you all, as you say, we are going to do the option four, which basically closes us out on the City of Perry service area on the east side of the city.
I was pulling my hair with your third one, now you pull it when you're gonna pull it all over.
Well, you know, I think it's very, it's very long-term. I mean, we're talking, you know, if you think about, I don't know, when you put the north fall line in, I know it's been at least 12 or 15 years ago.
Northy-south fall?
Yeah.
Well, that went in 21, 22 years ago.
See, that's, that, you know, the council before us planned for that, we're starting to max it out 21 years later. I don't know that this will take 21 years or 25 years, but we've gotta do the planning today. As that growth comes on, we can continually phase it in, but eventually, 25 years now, that's what that'll look like. And so, I just, you know, I think it's, you know, our decision at this point in time is how we're gonna manage growth going forward in Perry, and we, unless there's some significant change that happens in Houston County, that's a reality. I mean, it's, it's gonna happen. And, you know, I think it's, it's, it's us to take responsibility to do that planning.
If I may, the other thing that's important, council members, to keep in mind is, this is what you're being presented with right now, and then it'll have its little sister coming along in the water supply as well, okay? But if you, oddly, if you don't do anything, then you're gonna have these subdivisions, or that area's gonna do one of two things, possibly where it goes into one of Robbins, or if it goes county, okay? Either one of those two options is going to eliminate the City of Perry's options relative to growth. The second thing is that when you have this growth, you also have the property taxes, you have the various fees, you're increasing your basis, so you get economies of scale, you know, all those type of things are gonna be very beneficial for it. Now, and there are gonna be other costs we're gonna have to pay, don't get me wrong on that, but, you know, the more you expand out your client base, the better off we're going to be.
In the meantime, can we finance this?
Yes. In the meantime, right? In the mean, right now, yes, we can finance it, because you're not, you're not being asked to do anything other than saying, this is going to be the area we're going to serve with water and sewer. And so we start doing some of the planning and some of the cost estimates and some of the suggested phasing and some of the recommending for fee adj, you know, whatever the case may be, in order to take care of that. But the primary thing, like we've talked about, is it's all, it's going to be done in stages. You're not going to have to pay 21 billion dollars in the next five years to have this taken care of.
And the second treatment plant, when all this is in, will have to be built, right? Probably, at what cost, if it were built today?
I have no idea. Hefty.
It would be, it would be. I think you're going to generate a lot more interest in what's in that blue. It's tough to say, but going into what Mr. Gilmore was talking about, the plan, in our professional opinion, the first step is a feasibility study. It gets more information in front of council with more costs, more integration of the city's strategic service delivery plan in this particular area. So that way you have more, more information, but that's definitely the first step, is determining a plan.
But I feel that, go back to what you said with Gilmore, I think that very important that we keep a vision, how we're going to move, and the thing you did right now, and I want to put a bar behind this, that was no vision in the people parish, you know what I mean, so let us move forward, you know what I mean, going back. So may I say that we make the proper planning and we keep moving that way, and I think the revenue will come, you know what I mean, because the growth will come, I mean, and that's one of the things that we see right now. And so we don't need to just sit here and say, well, we ain't going to do nothing, because we ain't got the money to do it. And that's not too good a plan. I think with your helping, with everyone helping us and telling us what we need to do, and we see the process ourselves, what's going on right now in our city, and we can talk to Mr. Wood, how many projects we had last year, how many houses we built last year. So we just expanding all over, and so we just have to keep planning and keep moving. And I think, and I think it'll be, go back with Mr. Gilmore, but 22 years ago, the council they planned, and also right now, we begin to read the benefit. And so 15, 20 years, 50 years from now, what we're planning, somebody else will read benefit, you know what I mean, because we kept positive, we kept our head level, and we just kept moving. And that's, I think that's a good thing.
Well, I mean, you know, we're not going to go out tomorrow and start digging ditches and putting pipes in. I think we have to realize that we're talking about two different things, and if the growth doesn't come out there because of some downturn in the economy or something unforeseen happens, then so be it. We won't move forward with it. I mean, it's just, you know, relatively simple.
Well, the other option.
The option four.
For the feasibility study. Because that's the other thing, too. Feasibility study may come back, and you all may determine, or maybe recommend it to people, no. I mean, it's not the case, but for example, it comes back when feasibility says there's 60% wetlands in this area. Well, I would say, well, no, there's no point.
Okay. Everybody, in concurrence, we'll move forward with feasibility, feasibility study into option four. Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Yes, sir.
And now we have item 3B1D as the evaluation of Kings Chapel and Gower Road Water Supply. Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. At the request of the city, we took a look in to potential issues that are occurring along Kings Chapel and Gower Roads, where we have an existing area, existing system, but currently, the service area is being supplied water by Houston County Water Department. And there's a master meter in front of these subdivisions, and what's occurring is the county is building the city, and then the city is turning around and building the, the customers. So we were asked to take a look at adequate treatment capacity, permanent capacity for the city to supply these areas water, as well as adequate piping to get to those areas. We evaluated three options. I want to just, let's see here, show the map, and I'll walk you through it. The first option was to extend separate dead-end water veins along Kings Chapel Road and at 341 and Gower Road. And what this determined is that we have a line that would be coming off of Perry Parkway, coming along Kings Chapel, as well as 341 and up Gower Road to get to these subdivisions that are in blue, where the current, the city currently has infrastructure, but is being supplied water to those points by the county. Along Kings Chapel, we were looking at a 10-inch line here and a 12-inch line off of Highway 341 and Gower Road. The benefits for this is by looping everything so that we can get adequate fire supply, as well as adequate pressure to these particular areas. Estimated cost for this particular option is roughly 1.2 million dollars. The next option that we looked at was taking an 8-inch line and running along Kings Chapel Road and tying into the city's infrastructure serving these developments, as well as running an 8-inch extension along Highway 341 and up to this subdivision as well in the connection point. So what this does is it makes a loop all the way through. So you have redundancy coming from multiple directions, so that if a line break occurs on Highway 341, you can still feed all of this development, including the flow demand from Kings Chapel Road. Now, option one did not take that into consideration. There was not a loop. It was just basically extending a 10-inch line over and a 12-inch line up Gower Road, but they were not connected together. But by looping it in this direction, you have an 8-inch and an 8-inch. The estimated cost for option two is 1.1 million, and it adds more benefit than option one. So on option three, this is to look outside the box. We were just looking at these potential existing developments of serving water from city resources. Now we want to take a look at serving additional areas with the city's supply. So basically, the, the cost of installing these lines, now you're picking up additional development, and probably further to the east, that goes with Mr. Gilmore's point about the city's east service area. Once you bring sewer, you may want to think about potentially bringing water. So with this option three, now we are, we're going to keep a loop to make sure we provide the redundancy that we need, and extend a 12-inch line along Kings Chapel to Gower Road, and then bring a 12-inch line from 341 up Gower Road. So instead of just an 8-inch loop, now we have a 12-inch loop that will not only provide these areas with the pressure that they need, the flow that they need, but also gives the city additional capacity to accommodate future development in this 110-acre parcel here, but also further to the east if necessary. The cost for option three was roughly 1.4 million dollars. And again, these, these costs do have a contingency for unrooms and engineering and permitting and things of that sort. It is our opinion that option three is in the best interest of the city, considering the cost and the benefits of having redundancy coming from two directions. Any questions?
Councilmember's question about the three options that would have been presented tonight. What would be the city manager's recommendation?
City manager would be that you, out of the three options, you figure on three, because that gives you the greatest growth potential in the looping. Other than that, it's put on a shelf, we don't do anything with it. Not at that type of cost, and some other higher priorities. I don't think we actually need to get going on that type of stuff until, as Burke has indicated, there's more indication of growth, you know, coming in out there and/or there are issues with the county about the water supply, but that's not been the case. County's been very gracious about that.
So why I hear you saying is that we're not going to do anything with it, other than do the feasibility study on?
Well, I would recommend to do that right now. Just if it comes back up again, it would be the option three, instead of the dead end or just the 8-inch. Because that'd be a bunch of money that'd be spent, and like Burke said, it'd be no good for future growth.
And what was the original problem that caused this to be studied and looked at?
Just the growth, growth potential.
No problem out there now?
No.
Okay.
Well, yes, there's a growth, but there's also, you remember that the county was saying they wanted water feasibility studies done on all these new subdivisions? So we were concerned from the city's standpoint about whether that might be leading to some of the issue.
Water supply.
But it turns out that, we can chat, correct me if I'm wrong, but it turns out that the county's deal about the water feasibility dealt more with pipeline stuff for individual subdivisions rather than some other big ones. You may remember in our service agreement, all this area is scheduled to be, as the supplier is the Houston County Board of Commissioners of the Royal Water.
Is there an increased cost in order to the residents, first through them and then through the city? Do they pay a little more for their water than anybody else?
No. Every customer in the city, wherever they are located, pays the same amount, regardless of the supply, regardless of what has to be done, because they're all part of the city's system.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Appreciate the information. It was all very, very informative. Every time you show up, that means real money.
Saving money.
More than a traffic light. And thank you very much. If you'd like to stay and have a sandwich with us, we'd love to have you, but.
I've got two, three-year-olds, why don't you put on a hat?
And that the Tiger Ball game is calling, I can tell.
You slept with me?
Nah, she'd be with me.
It was, they're both Tigers. If anybody would like to have a sandwich at this time, please help yourself. I mean, I know it's, we've just come through the first hour and a half, so it's going to be here for a while, so if you feel, feel the urge, please go ahead. We also have soft drinks and water up here. C, and that's the office of the city manager, and 3C1 has considered certain adjustments relative to the downtown district. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Bryant, you're up, please.
Yes, sir.
Only to go up to the map.
Oh, okay.
While Haley's getting there, council members, there's nothing being asked of you tonight relative to this, but there are a few things I think that are going to be important for you all to keep in mind. The first one is, Haley, can you generally outline the Red Bear proposed new boundaries for the downtown district?
Yes. So as you recall, the DDA and the Main Street programs, as well as some feedback from planning commissioners, are kind of looking at our business boundaries, seeing which ways we can kind of either reel it in or expand it. So just a very brief overview, you'll see towards kind of the south, towards the Jernigan Street area going out into like the industrial, where it's kind of a commercial district. We're trying, the whole point of this is to increase in land area for development. So we've expanded some down Jernigan Street, towards the south of the city, and we've also looked towards the Eastgate Shopping Center, which would be over here, because there's a lot of potential land area that could be developed and just room to grow. We've expanded out that way as well. And then we have actually brought the boundary in some on Corwin Road. Right now, it extends out to the board of education access. We're bringing that more in towards Georgia Avenue, the Sunset Avenue area, right where Yoder's is, and Skipper John's, that will all stay included. And then nothing changes really anywhere else at all. So it's really just the expansion of Eastgate Shopping Center and then pulling some in towards the south over in Jernigan, kind of that industrial area right before Tollison. So, which is here, kind of the Wall Street, Jernigan, right before you can go lumber yard, essentially right where Rebecca Moody's offices is as well. So just a very brief general overview.
And you're not, so you got cemetery in there, that's what that is?
Yes, sir. With some development on the outskirts as well. We have talked about residential, we have, I know that, we have discussed some of the underhike, but that is not included currently. We're pretty much just following more the natural development of what our agenda is, so kind of that natural transgression, increasing the water ability that will hopefully later incorporate some of the natural development areas for the residential areas as well.
Is it in the downtown development authority now?
No.
So you're looking at coming all the way out to that five-acre parcel there, some developed behind there?
Yes, sir.
Is this a recommendation, or is it just an overview of what you guys are thinking about?
Still an overview of what we're thinking about. We're still kind of going through that process with the Middle Georgia Regional Commission. We should have that final master plan once Ms. Harden returns as well, and the DDA and major both have time to get back for the new year and discuss once again.
And Mayor, that will need to go as a, as a zoning change for moving maps or the growth planning mission to the council. Ms. Bryant, at this point in time?
Now, council members, what I'd like you to be thinking about, depending on what comes in, number one is, do you think there should be some of the residential neighborhoods included in the downtown district? Number two, if you expand the downtown district without some modifications, all the requirements and restrictions in the downtown district will stand out as well, which applies to design controls, which applies to signage, which applies to a whole bunch of other areas that may or may not be beneficial. Third thing is, along those lines, what do the general public folks have been considering as the historic downtown, you know, or should the purpose be slightly different on the downtown district? You know, should the district generally have some type of physically identifiable boundaries relative to that, or should it be kind of a hodgepodge of different parcels? Does it make sense for the downtown district? It's currently structured to come out as far as City Hall, see where I am, and San Minut and some of those areas. And the reason I think this is important, that we talked about this before, is you may remember, we went through the deal about extending the downtown district down to Courtney High and Ford. And in the manager's opinion, that was a complete mess. It came back- It came back, remember, came back to you all and taking it out because of a lot of restrictions and everything. I think, you know, certainly, you know, the Main Street Advisory Board, the DDA, as Bryant indicated, Planning Commission will all have input, as well, you know, public and all this type of stuff. But I think it's very important for you all to start thinking about this, you know, from your perspective, because ultimately, you all are gonna have to make the decision relative to how the boundaries should be adjusted. However, I do agree with the position, I think originally from DDA, that it is important that there is additional property included in the district in order for it to economically expand. That's that one. Second thing, downtown district, going back on my memo to you. We had talked about this before, and at that time, council made no decision to do anything. I will bring it back up for you, again, no decision but to think about. The manager would like to see us get rid of as many traffic control devices as we can downtown. Since Main Street's no longer a DOT-controlled street, you know, you control the street control devices at Jernegan, and Carroll, you control the traffic control device at Jernegan, and Maine, you control the traffic control device at Washington and Maine, but we probably have trouble with DOT because there's traffic flow control on that one. And you also control the traffic device at the intersection of Carroll and Washington. So I would like you to possibly consider whether you want to keep them, or if you would like to remove them. For example, I understand historically, way, way, way back when, but I do not see what the value is of a traffic control device and the corresponding cost at the intersection of Jernegan and Carroll. That's just the manager's opinion, but, you know, please keep in mind that all of these devices and everything carry their own bit of liability, they carry their own operating costs. You know, the other one is, of course, people not liking, I guess particularly if you're on Washington, you know, the three lights you have to go to and the kickback on that type of stuff. So that'd be something you need to possibly consider. Third item on my memo to you for you to consider is that, I believe it's Main Street, is talk about coming in with some type of signage plan and removing excess signage in the downtown that's not required and all that type of stuff. But one of the questions I think that may come out of that is whether, from them, but also so you're aware of it, about keeping the two-hour parking limit on Carroll Street. You know, that's one that seems to kind of go back and forth all the time about the value of it. Some folks like it, some folks don't, all that type of stuff. But the reason I'm pointing that out now is we're starting to get businesses that are going in, and they're parking their vehicles overnight on Carroll Street. So you may want to consider some type of timeframe, you may want to consider reducing that, see what I mean? You know, but I think that's something that's gonna be coming up as well.
On Carroll?
For the parking, just.
You know, we have a timeline there today.
Right. My question is, do you want to keep it?
Yeah.
Or you want to modify it?
I don't know. We're not, we're not enforcing it, but to have it.
Yes, but that goes back to my other question. If we're not going to enforce it, what's the point?
Because if you got people living there, I think we live and have all of that. If I got a business out there, I'm gonna live and talk.
Right. Right.
You're getting by. I gotta have some better park. You know what I mean? That's another issue that we, we have to do. Like you said, if they gonna park on Carroll, because they live in there, you know what I mean? We don't need to have a time limit, they gonna pull in, that's what he say.
Or, or you could have, give up, they have a permit or something.
Right.
The bigger issue, at least as I remember, is people who have businesses, but they may not be retail, or even retail people have their employees parked there, and then the employees, and then the customers can't park.
Right, definitely.
That's my understanding about the basis of why they have two-hour park.
And that, that does, it is going on today.
Right.
Many of the people are leaving their cars there on Carroll Street all day long.
That's right.
When we've asked them to park in the Main Street parking lot, if in fact they're working there or have an office there.
That's right. But you may want to, like I say, you may want to say, okay, fine, we're gonna keep it, but there's gonna be some time restrictions on it, you know, something, something like that. And then whatever it is, we need to say that we're going to enforce it.
For the expansion of the downtown district, say there's a new business that would be incorporated into that district, previously they were outside of it. Could we, as a part of the research into that, maybe get, you know, have Haley go, maybe explain to them what the benefits are of it, and get their input on terms of being included, if it had to be a part of the property?
What are the benefits of?
Well, based on the folks on Courtney Hodge, it's zero. Because remember, that was one of the big things, going out and contacting them, they're gonna get all the grants, they were gonna have this, they were gonna have that, but the property owners and the businesses were not interested in that type of stuff at all. They weren't interested in being left alone, so.
Well, for the whole, the whole concept, though, is an economic one, right? I mean, for businesses, it's not, I'm, I'm concerned about the private property rights of residences, if it went into a neighborhood. You know, as far as signage and this and that, the other things that you mentioned are private property rights for someone's residence. They may not be interested in any of the downtown development area where someone else is going to step in and have requirements for them on their property.
That's right. I mean, whatever they have now, if you add it in the district, then they're grandfathering for that particular sign or whatever the issue is. But in the future, or if they expand out, or they sell and change, whatever the case may be, then whatever the requirements are you have for the district applies to that property. So I'll give you an example from my perspective as a city manager, okay? I understand the deal about the space, but they're talking about, and what's that, Eastgate Shopping Center out there? There are a lot of issues, to put it mildly, with that piece of property, and the city definitely wants to have it developed. And we've talked about possibly using that as, I think, an opportunity zone, or we start some process on that type of stuff. If you include that in the downtown district and you don't make any other changes, then that site's gonna be restricted by what the downtown district allows. So there can be some type of business functions, going back to your point, Ms. Peterson, that would not be allowed, that's in the downtown district. The super big thing would be the signage issue. Just to kind of help refresh everybody, most of the signage issues for the downtown district are, were developed and set up for the businesses on Carroll Street. You know, they were not for, because that's a unique set of circumstances. So the other thing would be, well, okay, fine, we'll have it, and this, I think we talked about Courtney Hodge just for a little bit, but we'll have a different set of requirements for, well, then you wind up having potentially a whole patchwork of different, something like, yeah, in the downtown district, but you're on option A for signs and B for color, see what I mean, and all that kind of stuff, and it just, it just becomes unmanaged. And that's why I'm suggesting, you know, if you get a chance, go up, take a look and see, you know, do you think that this is appropriate for, for downtown? You know, for example, going back on Eastgate, maybe the best, most interesting thing on Eastgate would be to tear it down and put in some type of residential mixed use, some type of deal like that. Fine, but would that fit within the downtown district boundaries if it's in the downtown? Because that's another one of the issues about why the boundaries currently go up to Perimeter Road, off of Macon Road. Was a concern about the corridor patrol, see, you had talked about that. Now, there, in my opinion, there was a very good benefit about that, because that convenience store located at intersections is one of the better-looking buildings, you know, in the city. And that's because you had the design controls from the downtown development authority. But it caused issues for the school board, you know, with their property and all that type of stuff. So, see what I mean? That's why I think it's important to take a look at it, and, and if you're going to adjust the boundaries, what is it that you're interested in accomplishing, and where would you like the downtown to go?
Well, you know, is that what you want?
Well, I'm just, you know, I'm neutral on this. I would have to leave the room if we have that discussion. No, I just, I really.
Why do we want to change it? Who's pushing to change it?
Well, I think the development authority's looking for additional ground to expand on, bring in new businesses and increase that, and so they're just looking at, because I understand that's what they're, they're looking to do.
In a lot of ways, I think our downtown district has become somewhat landlocked, or there's not as much ability or capacity to further develop. And so as the city grows and our resident base continues to grow, the need for more buildings, more development, especially in your downtown area, would naturally grow as well, and we're just, to put it quite frankly, running out of space. Our occupancy and vacancy levels, you know, we're almost full max downtown currently, which is really great. And then obviously, we need various different building sizes and whatnot, so hopefully, new development can also bring in some of those opportunities for new businesses, adding to the diversity and business mix of our downtown, and therefore being able to better serve our residents as well.
And I think.
You know, this would take away from the charm of downtown here.
No, I don't think so at all.
If we.
I think that you incorporate all these other areas. I don't see them expanding it dramatically, and so it's just something that, you know, it's just for us to think about.
I'm sorry, come on, I was just to refer back to Councilman Hunt. I will say that Main Street's first priority is always historic preservation and integrity of that downtown term. So I know that the Main Street Advisory Board, that's where they work really well, hand-in-hand with the DDA, who is looking at this new development kind of overhaul in downtown development area, we're consistently working hand-in-hand. While this new development takes place, the advisory board in Main Street can work really hard to make sure that downtown charm and integrity is kept intact as well, making sure that those design guidelines are kept up to date, they're constantly moving and not necessarily changing, but developing at a rate that better suits what we currently have. So it all looks like a natural transgression.
And like Mr. Gilmore has said, you know, this is just thought. This is gonna have to go through all the processes, you're gonna have a number of different people looking at it before it comes back to you for final approval, and there will be a great deal of discussion between now and then to do that. So just a preliminary look at what they're thinking about today, want everybody to start thinking about that, formulating your opinions and those type of things, and just didn't want them to show up one night and say, oh, here's the new plan, so. Anything else, Mr. Gilmore?
No, I mean, that's it. But also, if you all have a heads up, if you start getting calls from property owners and people, but, you know, this discussion and what we thought about laws to change.
Anything else? Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Gilmore, three C two, provided name for the passive park at the former Cherokee Pines District.
Thank you, Mayor. There's nothing that you all need to do on this, at least tonight. I would like you all to start thinking, and that we can get ready to go to name that park, unless you officially just want to call it the new park, which is what we refer to now. I think it's, number one, I think it's important to be done, I think it makes a huge difference. For example, when the facility and stuff are coming out of the ground at Legacy Park and Heritage Park, at Crossroads, they have a name, people can identify with it, they know what's going on with it and all that type of stuff. You may remember, we did some outreach and had people have input, and we got a lot of input, you know, on that, so we'll get that information back to you, but I just wanted to have you all set and ready to go pretty quick about giving the, giving the park a name.
We have a nameless park. Cherokee Pines. You know, all the other two words.
That's one of the options?
Yes, sir.
The only option, at least as I understand it, that is not an option, is naming it after someone.
Right.
Living or death.
Right.
And as the boundaries of the park currently are, where do you enter that park?
On this.
Okay. And that's it? It's, it's landlocked all the way around?
Landlocked all the way around, correct.
Because I had, I had people mention that to me when I was out, that, you know, they had lost their ability to get over into that area once the city bought that land, you know. They had, it was much further, of course, these people had a child with a disability and it was, you know, it impacted them, that they had to go further around to, to get into the park. So that's just what I was asking.
No, I don't know that the city's.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm changing from city.
I think that the other owners might have restricted that, but as far as.
Access that they had been using, they can no longer.
But that really didn't have anything to do with the city, which is no problem.
And we would never be interested in trying to, to secure back some type of access to the park from a different street.
I don't know where we could do that.
That is something that would be considered, but I believe what that means is buying somebody's house. Less than they were willing to grant an easement, and I doubt whether that.
Give it some thought.
It'll be coming up again very, very soon.
Do we still have available to us the names that, when we have the meeting?
Yes, we'll be providing that too.
Next item is three C three, and this is considered adjusting solid waste collection in the downtown district. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, and the information I sent to you, we have four major issues impacting solid waste collection in the downtown district. First one is increasing solid waste load due to less vacancies, which Ms. Bryant referred to. Second is a lack of space for commercial-use dumpster containers. For example, there could be an issue with the current dumpster that is located adjacent to, or actually, I guess, on DDA property with that lot. You may remember, we all agreed, find the money to sell the property and all that type of stuff, or other areas where they just don't have, or potential restaurants are coming in, there's no space for a commercial dumpster. Tied with that is the changing use in the downtown, particularly the increase in restaurants, which also increases the volume. You may remember, there's been some discussions with Bodega Ru, you know, for example, on their solid waste. And the other thing which compounds it all is the increasing use of the dumpsters by non-district persons or organizations. Perfect example is the, if you all have been by to see it, the dumpster that the city put out, the roll-on, roll-off, the city put out for the buzzer drop is loaded with stuff that had nothing to do with buzzer drop. You go by and take a look at the dumpster that serves high precision, you know, you can go by there in the morning when it's still a little bit dark, and you can see people roll up and they throw their stuff into the dumpster. You have all kinds of people using the other dumpsters that are downtown and everything, so we would like to propose to council that you authorize us to proceed with a more detailed plan, not that you have to make a commitment, but generally what the purpose of the plan is to where there are daily collections downtown. Reason for that is, I think that, and at least for certain portions of the downtown, that we need to grow up, you know, with it, just like they do with the downtowns in Athens and Macon and that type of stuff, and have regular daily, you know, pickup, or maybe some variations or something on that. One of the things you may remember we had an issue with was cardboard recycling, you know, and Todd and his people have done an excellent job, but they do that on a regular basis going through to pick it up, and that may be what has to be done, at least for certain portions of the downtown. If you do not want to proceed with that, you can ask it to come up with some other plan, or we will continue to do what we're doing right now, but I can guarantee you that that is not working and that it's gonna get worse. You know, one of the other topics that came up, and this is several, several years ago, was going in and putting in a big containerized waste treatment with a packer and all that was going in and putting in a big containerized waste treatment with a packer and all that type of stuff. Well, that's a bunch of space, you know, you really don't have that, you've got problems of excess use coming in, who has and who doesn't, and so on and so forth.
Questions? Move forward with developing a plan.
Right. Now, I want to, that's not committing to it.
Yes, I understand.
I'm just coming back with an idea for you to take a look at and see.
Get the bill consensus?
Yeah.
Do you have consensus to move forward and develop the plan, Mr. Gilmore? Item 3C4 is Consider Approval of Additional Positions Throughout the Organization. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your packet is information from me recommending that Council add four new positions. That's based on our growth, the service expectations, the formal cross-training, and the succession planning, all of which you talked about as items that you wanted to address. First position we're recommending would be a Building Custodian One position. As you may be familiar, we've added the Tri Line Building, which is where community development is located. We also have the Arts Center, the World Center, and we're adding an increasing demand on the destination parks and the restrooms as we have success. And so we're recommending that an additional Building Custodian position be added there. Second position we're recommending is a Personnel Technician. Currently, there is one person we have who handles that. To give you an example, in the last year, they've processed 4,862 payroll checks, 360 position adjustments, health insurance, dental claims, federal and state reports, so on and so forth. The other important thing, going back to the succession planning, is that the current person we have in there will be retiring, not immediately, but fairly soon. And so I think we need to add that position. The next position that we're recommending would be Council's authorization to establish that, of course, after you review the job description and everything, but a Public Works Superintendent. You may remember, we've talked about that before. Currently, we have the Assistant City Manager, who is handling those duties out there. He has done a fine, outstanding job. However, there are a number of other issues and items that he needs to address, and that function needs to be filled. The last full-time position we're talking about would be Equipment Operator Landscape. This is for the downtown district. You may remember, we had talked about this before, to come in and take care of the general maintenance, some of the landscaping, solid waste letter control, and other tasks that are necessary relative to the downtown. Just to give you an example, you know, the merchants really love to have the blowers go out there and blow off the leaves and everything on the sidewalks, you know, every morning and all that type of stuff. There are a number of serious other issues that need to be taken care of. There is going to be a new park coming in online there with Legacy Park, which is in the downtown district, so we think we need to take care of that. The last position we're recommending would be just changing a part-time administrative secretary and police at full-time position because of the administrative reporting requirements and everything that the police department is having to go through and take care of. Good question, Council members. Are we going to pay for that? How much is it going to cost? Also, in the memo, you will see that for that, the Building Custodian position is estimated at 22,200. That's a full-year's position, so this won't be a full year. This will be half or a little less than that. We recommend half of that from the property tax increase we already have, and also doubling the rents for the Perry Arts Center, help pay for those costs. Second is Personnel Technician Position. Estimated cost on that is 35,009. General Fund Franchise Tax pays 74.25% of that, other funds pay 25.75%. And we already had an increase in our franchise tax, which includes the insurance premium tax, you know, to cover that type of cost. Public Works Superintendent Position would be 79.6. The General Fund Franchise pays 60% of that, other funds pay 39.28. And then the Equipment Operator Landscape is salary of 26.1, and that we would have paid for by the increase in the Accommodation Excise Tax, general purpose portion, which you all have already approved. To give you an idea, just to remind you on the deal about the property tax increase, I sent out information to you, but that is 309,000 more than what we originally had budgeted. We're not going to use all of that, obviously, because we're going to have other issues that come up and all that type of stuff. But I am comfortable that we recommend to you to make these necessary changes. Along those lines, of course, it'll still be your decision and everything. I think we need to consider shifting our process to where there are no new positions coming to you as part of the recommended budget, and we wait until we see what actually happens with the digest before making any determination on that. But that's not necessarily part of this.
And that's historically what we've done. When we were requested additional police officers, we waited till the digest came out before any decision was made on hiring those people in the past. And so, something else. I know the last eight, that's basically the way we-
Right, they were phased in.
Phased in. Questions?
How do you think, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. How do you think doubling the cost of renting the Arts Center will affect the number of people who rent it?
Zero.
Really? I mean, that's not just a, you know, slight increase since you double it, that's-
Depends on what phase you start from. When you're only charging $200 for all day long compared to other venues that are 500 to 1,000 a day, you're, you know, we're well below the market, let's put it that way.
Yeah, considerable. I mean, you could, you could talk about phasing it in, but there's a long waiting list right now. You have to come in and use the Arts Center. And I think if we, because we have relatively, relatively low, if for some reason that indicates some problem, you can make some type of adjustment, but I don't think so.
And we, when we set the rate years ago, we did not have the upgrades that have been done to the sound systems and the bathrooms and the meeting rooms and those type of things. And so I think that, you know, given all of that, we're, you know, we're at a point that we should be getting more for that, because we are by far the low-cost provider for the event space in Perry, Georgia.
My question is, I think it's very necessary to have all these new positions because, because we are short on, we need more employees instead of less, so I think it's very necessary to have these. But how soon can we get these folks in place?
Well, if you concur to proceed with it, you will have the formal voting on it at your meeting next Tuesday. But we would start the process. All of the positions except the Public Works Supervisor already have job descriptions for them, so we can go out and start posting and advertising, because they wouldn't be filled until you gave an okay on that. The Public Works Superintendent Position would be given a top priority, put together a job description to come back to you for you to take a look at, hopefully by a meeting on Tuesday. But if for some reason we don't have it then, it would definitely be your next meeting. And if you approved it, then we would go out and do the posting and advertising for you. Now, this would be a department-level position, so it would be going through your usual process that you have on that. All the others are just covered employees and go through the regular personnel process.
Questions? Do you have concurrence to move forward with the recommendation on adding these additional four positions plus the changing of the Administrative Secretary from part-time to full-time?
Okay.
Mr. Gilmore, you have concurrence to move forward with the changes that are recommended?
I'm sure. Some of the departments are delighted, others may not.
Item five is Consider Expansion of the City Council.
Yes. Council members, in my note that I provided to you, I am recommending that you all start considering the process about changing and/or expanding the council. The reason for that is, and we've touched on this before, in 2020, there is going to be the U.S. Census. Once that census is done, they will get the information to us, and the city is going to have to read district. There is no choice or anything on that, that is the law. First thing that has to be done with that is it has to be one person, one vote. So you take whatever that population is currently, for example, you divide that by three, and that's how many people are in the respective district. So if we have a considerable increase in our population, which we know that we have had from the last census district, that's going to be that many more people that each of the districts are going to have to represent if you don't make any change. Second thing, which I think was borne out significantly on the last round of elections we had for District Two, is that there is an ever-increasing size portion of our population that do not believe or know that they live in the city of Perry. Primarily, I think, because they have a mailing address of Kathleen, but there could be other issues with that. The issue about changing that to Perry is a dead issue. We have tried it at least four times with the Postal Service, and they refuse to make any change on that. Even if they did make the change, I don't think that that would necessarily change perception of a lot of the people out there and everything, that they do not, they're not aware of, maybe a better way of putting it, or feel like they're part of the city of Perry. And so therefore, I think that it's important that we go in and provide them an opportunity to have, in essence, their own representation. The other thing that's very important with it, just like we talked about when you gave the okay to proceed about the eastern Perry service area, that's going to be more and more and more growth coming into the city. And when you go on that growth, I think the increase in population is going to, and just the sheer numbers, and most of them not from Perry, it's going to make it a lot more difficult for each of you all to be effective elected representatives when you have so many more people coming in that have no frame of rep- I mean, they like Perry, but they don't know historically what it is. Which comes to the last point, is that Perry has historically indicated that it wants to provide, if at all possible, a majority-black representation on the council, which is, at least my understanding, is what originally led to the deal about the three districts and the setup and everything, going back to the population mix. There may be a slight decrease relative to that, but I think the black population is going to remain around 35, 34, maybe 33%. However, that black population is not as concentrated as it was before. You know, a number of our neighborhoods, which is a very good positive thing, but a number of our neighborhoods are very diversified. And that's where you run into the issue about the census, because it's not only just one person, one vote, but you also have to use the census-track building blocks to put together those districts. And for those of you I know, Mr. King and certainly Ms. Mine and Grace are very familiar with this, we have had to do extensive work to try and preserve that original intent of council. It is more and more difficult every single census that we go through, and I tend to think with our population growth and everything, if you keep the three districts, that other than the new growth area, there won't be any District Two anymore. District Two will wind up being split between District One and District Three, probably mostly District One, just by the numbers and those census tracks. You cannot, you don't have quite as much freedom, so to speak, as maybe the state legislature or the federal folks want germinating or any of that type of stuff. The only other way you could possibly do that is make very huge, significant changes in their districts, similar to the way, at least for a while, Valdosta was, which is where you, in essence, take the city and you divide it like a pie. Is that what I'm talking about there? Wire out, and it comes into a center. And I'm not sure, and that will not address, you know, a lot of the issues. And I want to point out, I don't think that this is just an issue relative to, you know, our black residents. I think it's an issue with a lot of our other, well, I guess it'd be white. The other, the other residents that, well, that are used to historic neighborhoods, they're used to historic representation, they're used to, you know, the access and all that type of stuff. And with the census requirements and everything, you can wind up having that adjusted or go away. So what I'm recommending to you is that you be aware of this, there is anything you need to immediately do, excuse me, but I do think you need to be thinking about that. My initial recommendation right now would be that you add another district, so that there would be four districts, and that fourth one will probably be all the new growth, which currently primarily is in District Two, but may not be exclusively. There are other options you may want to take a look at, but, you know, for example, one represented from each district, you add more districts, you have a council member of law, assuming there's a series of other different options. If you are agreeable that we at least start to take a look at that and everything, then we will bring in some type of consultant, you know, to present to you with different options and all that type of stuff. The reason this is coming to you now is, one, I think it's very important, you know, number two, we need to be planning and decide what we're going to do, because if you're going to make any change, it has to go to the General Assembly. Isn't that correct, Mr. Gilmore? And they only meet for a little bit, some people say too long, but still only a little bit. And it's just, it's just once a year. So I don't, in all likelihood, probably we would not be able to get it, I think, wind up being too rushed. It's very difficult to get it into this General Assembly. See what I mean? So it would be talking about 2021, that we'd be going in then. Whatever is determined, excuse me, if you determine to make a change, then of course, we would tie it into after or as part of whatever the census retrenching and all that type of stuff is. So everybody would have plenty of notice about what was going on. So I guess what I'm asking you this evening is, are you interested in even taking a look at options and considering it, or you want to think about, or no? If you say no, then we won't do anything with it, but you have been advised about what the issues are that are coming up.
It's time. Tell me how to go and get some ball, and it's state and federal.
Okay. The federal government is involved because federal law says you have to read district after each census.
No, no, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the way show of whites to blacks, or do they get involved and say, okay, you've got to have one white district and one black district?
No, they do not. They did, but they allegedly don't anymore.
Allegedly, but what is-
Well, the only reason I say that is, I think it was not too long ago, Department of Justice was down here asking about something, you know, relative to, I mean, the bottom line is if the federal Department of Justice says they want to come in and do some checking or investigating, then they're here.
And they could do that in any direction. They could question, why do you have a district that's predominantly white?
Yes, they could. That's absolutely correct.
I mean, in a way, it just is.
Right, they, that's right. They-
A lot of the ones that have much control do we have on it.
You have control relative to how you set up your boundaries. You have control relative to your size, the type of makeup that you have. You have the opportunity to respond back if there's any issues from the federal people or from the state. And as long as you, as long as you can, as long as you can hold to the general principle that one person, one vote has been adhered to, so in other words, you don't have one district that has 1,000 people and another one that has- district that has a thousand people and another one that has five thousand seven hundred, and that you have made your best effort underneath the guidelines to provide the opportunity or ensure that all members of your diverse population have representation. Now, we're obviously not going to set up a district for female Eskimos, because you probably don't have too many, but we do need to be aware of the Latina population. You know, we need to be aware of the black population, we need to be aware of, I think, changes relative to age. And all of that stuff starts to come in, or potentially census type of deal. But you, primarily, you don't want to be in a situation that it would appear from someone on the outside or from the Department of Justice, that you're making these arrangements or this redistricting to short some group or rob some group of their potential representation. And that's why I mentioned the deal about the historic setup with the city of Perry. You know, I think we need to be aware of that, because that's going to be checked by the Justice Department.
You know, if you ran on that, because when, when he came and talked to me, that was one of the things that you said, so we've got to get rid of the diversity. And the thing that he asked me for, kind of concerned, why don't we have a black kind of commission, I mean, and he asked me that personally, and I told him, we know that some blacks in the county, you know what I mean, and I told him, I don't know anything about who wanted to run. I couldn't, I answered that to his best ability, but you're right, you've got a good point there. Going there, what the people say, a lot of time, they're going to come, the word going to get out and the people going to be talking, they'll come all the way out of DC just to check to see what's going on, because that's what happened when--
They questioned us.
So I wondered some math, you know what I mean, so that was the issue that came up, you know what I mean, I said, a lot of stuff's going to happen, you know what I mean, so, and like you said, with the census coming, we just have to be ready for it. And what we do, I know, like I always say, we do it for, do it for all the people, just not just for one, and that's one of the things that I'm, I'm very happy about, that we've been doing that and we continue to do that, you know what I mean, and we could still make Perry a good place to stay and live and have a part of their life.
I was one of the people that they interviewed, but I don't, they swore me to secrecy. But anyhow, at the side of the paper. But maybe they asked me a different set of questions than that. But I think, I think it's important that we add, I would like to see another district come, because of the large population out in Kathleen, because I talk to people all the time, just like you said, that have no idea that they are Perry folk. They still call it Kathleen, and that's why they stay in their mailboxes, this address and all that, so as large as that area is, and it's growing, it's going to be imperative that we put somebody else up here to help represent those folks.
During the course of my recent campaign and spending a lot of time out there, off Bear Branch and off 127, back in those neighborhoods, you know, I encountered many people who said, I would have been Perry, many, many, but I also encountered many military families who said, oh, we vote in Washington State, or we vote in Florida, and, you know, they, we have that out there as well. But, but yes, I, and I'll disagree with you just a little bit, Lee, I do believe that if their male said Perry, that would be a huge change for them. They believe they live in Perry, in Kathleen, because their male comes to Kathleen. And I believe that the envelope said Perry, they would believe they live in Perry, even though they already do, they don't, they don't know it, they don't believe it. I told as many as I could, but it's a very significant problem out there.
I know one thing that, that happened, and we just did it one year, I think, we did town hall meetings in that area, a town hall meeting in that area. I think we need, we might need to start doing that again this year, not just there, but we did it all over town, but a lot of folks that were behind that offer, weren't as large as it is now, but that's when they realized that they were Perry folk.
And that town hall wasn't very well attended, a lot of questions--
Uh huh, yeah, uh huh. So I think that might would be a way that we start to include those folks in town hall meetings, because as you look around, mostly everybody here works for the city of Perry. There are no visitors, per se, but the friends. So it might be who was to start those town hall meetings back up, to give those folks an opportunity to define that they really are in Perry and to share information with them, since they won't come here to get it. Now, I heard that, I have this, so I have no idea, I'm just going on hearsay, that the station that used to be available to Perry folk is no longer available.
Come south.
Is that right?
Come south?
Uh huh.
That's correct.
Okay, so they no longer have that. See, at one time, you could at least watch to see what's going on, and now you can't even watch, so if we don't help to take it to them, they're not coming for it, so we will, we will have to find a way to take this information to them, what's going on in Perry and who they are.
I think there are several things we could do to reach out with them, so I'm just thinking we need to be busy doing it.
Anything else, Mr. Gilmore?
Well, I guess my question is, do you want to think about that, or do you want to start the process?
Yeah. Maybe you should start the process, because it's coming, one way we, what we sit on it, but you want to make a point, we sit on it, the census is going to be taken, and we start, that don't mean we're going to make a decision tonight, you know what I mean, or right away, but the process we started, and we'll know when we move forward, you know what I mean? That just means--
Because what we would be doing is authorizing Lee to go out and do some research and maybe look at a consultant to bring back options to us--
There you go.
--to move forward, is that, that's my--
Right. And then you take a look at it and decide whether, yes or no?
Oh, yeah, consensus to move forward, so we will look forward to your recommendation. Item six is consider proceeding with exit 136 landscaping plan. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you. Mayor and Council, in your board pack is information from me indicating that the exit 136, I-75 and SAM None, some of y'all, it seems like ancient history now, which you may remember that council authorized proceeding about doing some landscaping out at the exit as part of the beautification. We did receive some money from the state for fifty thousand for that, which as far as I know is still valid. However, there's been a series of delays, primarily from Georgia DOT, about a whole series of requirements, like we had to get an okay from billboard owners, get an okay for property owners, get an okay seemingly from truck drivers who went by, all kinds of delays and all that type of stuff. In addition, Newland DOT has to approve the landscaping, not just the design, but the plants and all that type of stuff. Also, you may remember, because of our area and everything here, it needs to be landsc-- or irrigated, because if it's not, it just won't survive, the OT has criteria with that. So what I provided to you is that, at least right now, and this is just the initial estimate, the total estimated cost for that landscaping project is a hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. Of that, we have the grant money for fifty thousand. So my question to you, council members, is do you want to proceed with spending a hundred thousand or so to landscape that exits? If you decide you want to do that, it will come from our splosh revenues. I understand, at least I think I do, you know, understand the value of having landscaping and all that type of stuff, but before we go any further, I wanted to come back and get you to confirm that you're interested in spending that much money for that. I will say, from the manager's perspective, appreciating the beauty of the plants and all that type of stuff, I do not believe it's worth our hundred thousand, considering the other needs we have to do the landscaping of those quadrants.
It would have to be that amount, it would have to be a hundred. I mean, if we, was there any way to scale back that plan of a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars?
Well, that's kind of a yes and no. The yes part of it is, sure, you can scale it back, you do one quadrant, then you come back later and you do a second quadrant, you see what I mean? But then, at least from my perspective, A, you're losing the whole intent of beautifying the whole exit when you're coming off. The second thing is you run the risk that you put that first quadrant in and then there's a change in federal regulations or DOT, and you don't get to do the others, or they say you need to do something else, or whatever the case may be. The other thing is, is that you could also wind up increasing the cost, for example, when you are running irrigation to only one quadrant instead of running into all four. And I don't think DOT will allow, they might, and I don't think they'll allow us just to go in and put this irrigation stuff in if there isn't any type of project that's, that's going to be done.
Is that a figure, two or three years old, or is that current figure?
Uh, no, this estimate is as of December thirteenth.
Was it last year?
2019, right.
I thought it might have gone back, two or three years when we talked about it before and decided not to do it.
No. Because that, that, you are correct, Mr. Hunt, that was done, we went back and did some revisions and came back. Now, this is actually less than what the next second round of your cost work for the landscaping, so I, I don't think the, basically the cost of the landscaping is going to get any less. I think it could go up, but it's not going to get any less.
That's what I was worried about.
The other thing, the other thing with this too, is that, well, necessarily I don't think it'd be a huge amount, but it is going to increase our maintenance costs, and I am extremely weary about having our folks out doing any type of maintenance on interstate side of the roads or exits or any of that type of stuff. We, we used to do some mowing, you may notice that we do some cutting and mowing out there, but this would be a lot different.
That means the state's going to have to do it.
Well, it's going to be possibly the state will do it, but I think in all likelihood with our permit is there's going to be a whole series of requirements that you're going to have to do, Chad, correct if I'm wrong, and I have no idea what they're going to be. Okay, for example, when we talked about the deal about irrigation, you know, they did not want to have certain types of irrigation there, because that could be water on the roads and with freezing ice and snow, that's going to be a problem. We told them, no, not, not where we are here, well, that doesn't matter, that's one of the requirements. So it has to be low wind ground, I think of that, right, Chad? That type of irrigation, which is, you know, more expensive and all that type of stuff, and we have to maintain it. I have a feeling that there'd just be a whole series of other requirements that have to be cut at a certain time, it can't have any certain height, so on and so forth. Now, other places do have very fancy landscaping that's done, and they have gotten an okay from DOT, so I don't want to give the impression that you can't do it, but most of those, at least as far as I know, particularly up in metro Atlanta, they have their own districts that levy taxes to pay for that type of maintenance. And I just do not see us, at least at this time, in a position to do that. The other thing, I think, to council members, it kind of like we have to take into account with rezoning and everything, is that once you do one exit, then you can have folks coming in saying, well, why don't you do our exit? Why don't you do the next one? And I forget what the exit number is, but the one for the fairgrounds--
At 138, I mean, we need it, Bush.
There you go.
Exactly, if we don't get it too--
Well, that's, that's exactly right.
You got 135, 134--
Yeah. That's right. And you get down there with a 134, that's a lot of land out there. You got to do some landscaping.
What about any kind of signage there that says the same, welcome to Perry, kind of thing?
All that would be controlled by DOT. And as far as I know, other than traffic control things, they do not allow any signage in those quadrants.
What happened, we don't do nothing? What happened, we don't do nothing with exit, what's that say?
Well, if you don't do anything with it, we'll be contacted again, I'm assuming, by DOT, are you going to spend this money? And if we don't have any plan, then they'll just--
We got to give back.
--take it away. I'm actually kind of surprised that we still have an okay, at least last time we checked with DOT, because, well, to give you an example, this project was originally authorized, what, three years ago?
Yes, I, I do have a couple of comments, just to piggyback on what you're saying. The original project was about, was three hundred and eighty-two thousand is what it was. And that was about three years ago, and we had complete approval to do it. The, we chose not to because of the sheer cost that the bid came in at, we bidded the project. So that's when we went back and we scaled back to this one hundred and forty-seven thousand. So my mind, we've already scaled back as much as we can. Second of all, just a reminder, this is only the inside quadrants. For example, if you're going down the exit ramp or up the exit ramp is the inside, the side against the interstate, not the outside. So some of that, and then there is a little bit of, of, of design on the outside, but most of it is on the inside portion of those quadrants. So there's a couple of things to think and keep in mind. The other is DOT does have a lot of restrictions on watering, and we will have to sign a right-of-way maintenance agreement, pretty much. We are responsible for that area of these quadrants. If DOT's not going to do any work, if they do, they're just going to mow it, you know, pretty much. So just, that's a couple of things to keep in mind. The fifty thousand dollars, I think, that we're talking about has not been given to us, we don't have a check for, or the money in our bank, but it is pending. We have approval through, through the DOT to get that money, provided we complete the project. So we just won't, won't exercise gaining that money if we choose not to move forward.
Also, following, I may, following up on Chad's point, I'm not really sure when we get that fifty thousand. You know, because DOT, you know, they, they may say you have this money and everything, but kind of like with FEMA, you know, they say you're going to get the money and then, oh, well, we don't have it, or you--
You see what I mean?
In other words, so you'd be paying the full amount upfront, but maybe a third of it coming back to you.
On that note, like you said, if we start doing that, that's our own cost process, right, we got to continue to maintain it, we got to continue to do this, and, and like you said, with all the stipulations that DOT can put on us, by the water system, we like you said, the freeze and, you know, they're going to hold us reliable, everybody's going to come up on there and come by there, whatever, have, say, if Perry's going to be allowed, that's why I don't think we need to do it. That is my question.
Can we just say no when we do it? But let's just say no.
Yeah, I mean, if you encourage you to postpone the project--
Okay, okay.
Then, then what we would do would be, we would contact DOT, we'd say, thank you very much, but we can't release that money. I think if you're going to spend a hundred thousand, I think there are a lot of other improvements you can do in different quarters or whatever, that you have the control over rather than the exit.
So, am I understanding, if we don't go forward with that, then, then you're just going to give Ansley a hundred thousand dollars in the cover to go forth and beautify the city?
No, Ms. Peterson, you misunderstood. Ansley's welcome to submit any suggestion she has.
And that which one of them said?
For example, I think, I think y'all can get more bang out of your buck putting a hundred K in resurfacing our streets than, than landscaping. You know, the interstate, particularly because, as Chad indicated, you don't have any real control over it.
That's right.
You get a lot of restrictions and requirements, but you don't have any control.
I assume the answer is no. Put it on the shelf. A procedural question here. We're probably only, I would say, because we're talking about executive session with a large number of issues. Is that correct? That, in consideration of what's going to occur at eight o'clock, if the body want, we're, and I'm also a firm believer that the mind can only absorb so much as what other parts of the body can stand.
The mind's tight.
We all have, I have a lot more.
We can suspend this and restart it, can we not?
Restart it, we?
That's what I'm going to ask you guys, if you, if your calendar will allow you to do it tomorrow night, or sometime later on this week. It's up to you.
What about next Monday?
Holiday. It's a holiday.
Oh, that's right.
That's the only reason we wouldn't do it then. So what is the preference of council? Do you want to just plow through here and stay as late as we can, or do you want to look at us giving an alternate date to finish up?
Tomorrow is not good.
Yeah, I can do tomorrow.
I'm feeling fine, but almost over.
Mr. Gilmore, what would be the procedure for doing that?
To Ms. Newby, my understanding would be that you would suspend the meeting and then reconvene it at whatever your next time is, or you just adjourn from this meeting and reschedule another.
I think in doing that, we'll need notice though.
How much more time?
I got you.
I said, if we were to adjourn and then reschedule another meeting, we would have to have notice of when the next meeting is going to be.
We'd have to have twenty-four hour notice.
Usually it's a special call meeting. I think that would be if you adjourn.
How much more time we got?
If we just suspended it, we'll be okay to come back tomorrow with that?
I would imagine, Mr. Gilmore, your estimate's probably another hour and a half. I would think so.
See, I ain't got no problem with it. I'm just going with, tell me there's one person, you know?
You can't be here tomorrow?
Yeah, I can. You're gonna let me know if I get busy.
It's an alarm.
Yeah, I know that.
How long?
Too much going on.
Fifteen, twenty minutes.
Probably ten, ten, fifteen minutes.
Because City Hall discussion needs to be a very in-depth discussion, and the municipal court, he heard the pleas tonight, so that's, that's not something we just pass over. Ms. Newby says that she can do her part in about four minutes, I mean, so why don't we do this if, if we have agreement? Why don't we, and I do apologize, because we put this thing together, I never thought about a football game for that. I'm not into sports, so, I know that. So are there a number of other people in this room. And in, in consideration of that, why don't we, I would make a recommendation to council at this point in time, that we go through item seven, we suspend our meeting after that period of time, and we reconvene tomorrow afternoon at five o'clock. No dinner will be presented. We will work, work our way through the items, because we do have a lengthy executive session that needs to be conducted. I will entertain a motion to that.
A little bit, second.
All in favor, please indicate it by raising your right hand. We will suspend the meeting after item seven is discussed, so Ms. Newby.
Thank you.
Is that the appropriate way of doing it? And remember, you only got four minutes.
Okay.
You got ten minutes.
So under the zoning procedures law, local governments that are exercising zoning powers require to adopt standards for conducting hearings relative to zoning actions, and printed copies of those policies and procedures should be made available to the general public, for distribution to the general public. This comes into play whenever we have those public hearings that are doing the rezoning applications or special use permits. The zoning procedures law, in addition to requiring that we have written policies and procedures for how to conduct the hearings, also requires that we have standards or factors by which the local government authority wants to consider. And you may recall that Mr. Wood does a very good job of this. We've adopted twelve standards or factors in our land management ordinance. It's section two dash three point one, and every staff recommendation that you receive basically goes through those factors and gives you an analysis of each factor or standard. So we're doing a very good job there in satisfying that under the zoning procedures law. We currently do have, traditionally followed a procedure for conducting the hearings. You may recall, usually, the proponent or petitioner is first allowed to speak after staff's recommendation. Public is asked, does anyone want to speak for? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against? And then the public hearing is closed. But we haven't actually, we don't have a written formal policy that outlines those procedures. And so that's what we need to do, or it's my recommendation that we adopt some written formal policies and procedures for the conduct of the hearings, so that, just to ensure that we're in compliance with the zoning procedures law. And so, in my memo that you have, a copy of, a hard copy in front of you, as well as it's available on Board Pack, are some examples of some other cities in the state of Georgia. You can either adopt those written policies and procedures in ordinance form, or you can do it just by passing it as a resolution, or just as a policy of council. And so you have a couple of examples to look through, and that way you can just decide how y'all wish to formalize those policies, procedures in a written form, so that you can then advise us how to move forward to draft that.
Lowly, you just don't, like, do you have a recommendation on this one that we should do?
Well, we have codified our standards in the land management ordinance, and so because they are codified and made part of the code, then you can allow that to constitute basically being available to the public. It may be easier, though, if you pass them in a resolution or just a policy to update over time if you need to do so, rather than having to amend it ordinance. The only thing to remember, though, is if you adopt the policies and procedures in written form, that's either a resolution or just a policy that's adopted, we need to make a written copy of those available at the hearings whenever we have a hearing available.
You didn't put a, put a thing?
Yes, sir, available for the room. I'm not sure if that was four minutes.
No, it's, no, it's, I'm just, what, what questions do you have relative to this? Because we are going to make a major change, make sure that we document what our hearing proceedings are going to be, and so. Would you like to review the information, and we'll bring it back up tomorrow night as a starting agenda item?
Is that, like, because I'd like to read it tonight.
And I would like for you all to take time to be able to see the different examples, because, other than just making sure that we satisfy the state minimum standards, because there are certain time limits that have to be provided, that being ten minutes for each side as a minimum, you'll see things that range from each side having an unlimited amount of time. So you may not wish to take it that far, but just to get an idea of what the range is and what kind of we think fits for the city of Perry. And the other thing, if I may, just as a point to bring up, whenever we have these written policies and procedures, as well as the standards that are already in place in the land management ordinance, whatever, considering your decision before you vote, when it's dealing with a zoning action or making a zoning decision, I would recommend that you be able to look at those standards that we have in the code, and for you to be able to justify, based on those standards, how you're voting in any type of position.
Be able to articulate your decision based upon the standards that we've set for.
Yes, sir.
So we need, we need to keep, we just need to remember that.
Neither. Again, Mr. Wood does a very good job in his staff report, that those, those are all itemized for you, that the standard is, it's like number one, and it says what the standard is in italics, and then they give you the staff recommendation that's responsive to that standard. And those reports are always available on Board Pack forty. And then he actually reads the report at the beginning of the hearing.
Mr. Gilmore, any comments?
First one is, I would recommend that you use a resolution format, because like Brooks said, if you go with the ordinance, it's, it's a long process that has to be done. And then the second thing would be, if you are agreeable to that, while you take a look at that, staff-wise, we'll get some recommended, you know, to you that addresses the minimum. I want to point out that, at least as far as I know, everything you're doing is fine. There isn't any issue or any changes that you all have to make. But we don't, other than the standards, you know, you don't have this other portion like Brooks was talking about where it's actually laid out.
Oh, yeah.
So kind of going back to Mr. King's point, there really isn't anything different that you need to do. You know, for example, Brian does a very good job making the presentation, you provide, you don't have it specified as ten minutes, but you provide plenty of time for both sides. You may remember, kind of, kind of funny with Mayor Fairclaw about those dead silences he had there, but it was perfect relative to the requirement you had. You see what I mean? And then when you make your recommendations, you, as far as I know, almost always will say, well, we're going to, per the planning commission's recommendation, or per staff's recommendation, or per planning commission's recommendation with certain set, you see what I mean? So you're covered on a lot of that type of stuff, but we don't have that written down for you. But I would recommend, I mean, certainly, like Brooks said, take a look at that, if you're agreeable with that, we'll have some resolution for you to consider. Hopefully, it's your regular meeting on Tuesday, and then you can just go from there. But I think it'd be too soon to expect to do something for tomorrow.
Any additional questions? Well, if, if there's no other comments, at this point in time, we will suspend this meeting. We'll reconvene the meeting at five o'clock tomorrow afternoon to finish up the agenda items that we have here, plus an executive session tomorrow afternoon. I appreciate, I appreciate everybody's patience, I know it's been a very long evening, and we'll move through the agenda tomorrow night. Thank you. Good evening. This is, I think, the first time I've ever had the opportunity to do that. I would like to reconvene the work session for the Perry City Council for January the fourteenth, two thousand twenty. This is a continuation of our work session that we halted last night about eight fifteen on January the thirteenth, and we will start this evening with item three C seven. Yesterday, or last evening, Ms. Newby went over the zoning procedure process that she had put together for us, and what the state requirements were. She provided all of you with four different possible scenarios that we could move forward with, or our own, and I hope that all of you had an opportunity during the day to review those and determine if there was one specific type of procedure that you would like. At this time, I will turn it back over to Ms. Newby to talk us through those four examples. Doctor, I don't know if you got a copy of that or not, from yesterday?
Maybe.
Okay, so you've got a copy of it, great. I'm glad that they got you a copy of that. So, Ms. Newby, show it now. The reason we're doing this is because she and Lee tend to lead most of the discussions, and where they were being situated was very hard, take, for me to.
Yes, sir. Thank you. So what you have in your packet in the memo that I've provided to you, that's also available on Board Pack, again, from last night, just to recap, all we're doing is putting into a formal written policy what our policies and procedures are as they relate to the conducting of zoning hearings. And so you have a copy of the statute, which is OCGA thirty-six sixty-six dash five, which establishes for you the, the minimum standards there, with each time being a minimum period of no less than ten minutes per side.
How many minutes?
Ten minutes, a minimum of no, of ten minutes per side. And so the first example that I've provided, and again, we talked about how you can either adopt these in a resolution, we could adopt it through an ordinance that would be codified and added to our code, or we just adopt it as a policy. And so the first thing you have in front of you, I believe it's from the city of Jefferson, and as you can tell, it's just a policy. The second example is from the city of Centerville, and is adopted as part of their code. The third example is from the city of Covington, it's also part of their code. And then the last is just a council policy that was adopted by the city of Woodstock. And so if you've had an opportunity to review these, you can see that some of them are more detailed in setting the procedure, specifically stating that obviously the chairperson or mayor will address either the petitioner or applicant, allow them to speak. So it's just, I guess at this point, what direction is, is council interested in taking, and what questions do you have for me?
Questions?
I have one question, under the, I don't know which page this is, it looks like.
Yes, ma'am, that's the first one.
That's from Jefferson, Georgia, I think.
Right.
Okay. It talked about petitions, the studies, the letters and other materials should be submitted prior to the hearing. I wondered sometimes, do we get all of that? Do we get those studies and things prior to the hearing, or do we just hear people address it?
I think Mr. Wood may be able to speak to this, but I know it's submitted, I believe, to his office, and then probably have made available.
We try to obtain as much information ahead of time. There may, as much as we can, there may be situations where additional information is provided at a, at a public hearing. I think if, depending on the length of that information or the amount of information that's provided, that may be a reason that you want to continue a public hearing, or finish the public hearing and continue the consideration to a, to a later time. I think we should try to discourage that happening, because, because of the potential that it's, including information that needs to be taken into consideration. So I think whatever we can do to encourage it prior to the public hearing, we should.
I was kind of thinking about the, the new water, thank you very much, the new water regulations and restrictions that come to bear on the car wash and tinting business that the applicant, I don't think, was aware of, but, and we knew there were some. that the applicant, I don't think, was aware of, but, and we knew there were some, but we just didn't know what they were. I mean, I, I mean, just think for myself, I didn't know what those water changes were. That would be helpful to me, to know that kind of thing.
Right.
Thank you.
Ms. Gilmore?
Let me point out one difference that we do in Perry that can be different than a lot of other communities. And some of the council members who have been on the council longer time may remember, like Mr. Hunt, when we made the change. The state law requires that you have to have a public hearing. The official public hearing for the rezoning and everything is your hearing. You know, the first one you have before they have the ordinance when they come in, okay? What previous council did was to say, there will also be, and it's posted, run in the paper and everything, there'll be an informational hearing. The informational hearing is what is held by the Planning Commission. The purpose of that from council was to get as many of the parties together to talk about whatever the issues are, explain all the type of stuff, and hopefully, address most of the questions. That's not a guarantee, you see what I mean? But that's not, that's not the official public hearing, but that's the purpose. So kind of following up on Mr. Wood's point, all the information that is turned in by either party, whatever's done, whatever's discussed with Planning Commission, all is part of that informational hearing and is available. What comes to you for your public hearing is the summation and the major information, if there's some major support documentation about who the parties were, what was being asked for, and what the recommendation is from Planning Commission. And then, of course, you'll have some discussion if it was controversial. Everybody with me on that type of stuff? So you'll initially have, or be aware that there's already been the first round for people hopefully get their questions answered, and kind of going back on the Mr. Davis issue, that doesn't always work, you know, for a number of reasons, but that's the general purpose of it, okay? Then you have your public hearing, and as Mr. Wood has indicated, either information that has been provided by the party, or by the Planning Commission, or whatever, after their information hearing comes to you. Just whatever it is is submitted to you. Plus, when you have your public hearing, whatever other comments or concerns that, that people have. Now, one of the advantages of that is that for most of your hearings, you may notice you don't have very many people attending it for the rezoning. And that's usually because they've already had their questions answered, they, or they realize it's going on and they don't care. You see what I mean? That type of stuff. And, and so consequently, that's what we do with the data. Now, we'd be happy to, if council wants to have all that other type of stuff, but, you know, historically, the council's been interested to see, at least it's my understanding, the council is interested in seeing what is the case, what is being asked for, what does the Planning Commission recommend? And then you have the public hearing where most sides, whatever, can come in and, and have their say. And then you all end the public hearing, and then because it's required with our code, which is not, it's a zoning deal, but it's in our code, then you have the first reading of the ordinance, okay? Now, that's being done because our Code of Ordinances says that any of the rezonings has to be an amendment to, if I'm wrong, Brooks, but an amendment to the land ordinance, land ordinance is part of the code, so therefore you have to go through the ordinance process. So that's why for like the rezonings, you don't make a decision that meeting, even if you're all set and ready to go. Then the next meeting, you have the ordinance. When it's the ordinance time, then it's up to the elected official running the meeting, which is using the mayor, about how much say is there gonna be, or whatever's gonna be allowed, then you make your decision and you vote. Same type of thing with special exceptions, except that does not require an ordinance, and so therefore you could make your decision at that.
That's what I wanted to say, because that's, the car wash was a special exception. That was not a zoning request, so you could vote on it that night. But we elected because of the new data that came out that night to table that, and give everybody a couple of weeks to get additional information, develop their thoughts on that, ask questions and that type of thing, so. There were distinct, we were talking about two different things.
Yes, I see that. Now, I do think that, you know, we, like we always said, we were kind of in a pickle with the staff recommending one thing and the commission recommending something else. So when there's times like that, we might need more than the usual, last, you know, last bit of information we might need as a background.
Well, let me, just from a mayor position, let me just give you some of my thoughts real quickly on this, since we're talking about these things. That is why we desperately try, and we do, Ms. Warren gets everything loaded to the Board Pack sometime, it might be seven o'clock on Friday night, and she's here making sure to get those last few changes. I would encourage you to go through that, and then whatever time you need on Monday or Tuesday, is contact the department heads. Or contact Mr. Gilmore, or myself, or, or Ms. Newby about, I don't understand this. I'd like to have more explanation about it. And take that time to really drill down if you've got questions, and find out more about it. But when you get here, then you'll know when those people start talking about it, you've got some additional data about it. I think that's really, really critical, if any of those questions that come up. But those are all good. Mr. King?
No, when you got finished, I was gonna go back to what Ms. Newby said, what can we think about?
Yeah, that's where we are. We've, we've been talking about, you know, a large number of things, but the question is, what process or procedure do you want to, her to draft going forward?
Okay, this is my question, is that, what's wrong with the procedure we got? Do we get, can we add to it to, if we need to be clarified? So, I like what we're doing, but it is then, in order for the mandate to be legal, you know what I mean? So you say, well, we can do this to correct it, and we keep our procedure going, do we have to adopt somebody else to, somewhere else, appreciate her doing the homework and bringing it to us? And my question, going back to Mr. Wood, is that, he doing a good job, because now since you the mayor, we give people, when I was acting mayor, I had to learn real quick, though, Ms. Newby brought me up to speed, so I have to give, can't finish, you know what I mean? Yeah, or nay? You know, and that's the thing that I'm saying, is that's our procedure, and see if we have to make a resolution, is that? What's wrong with our procedure, is that?
Yes, sir. Mr. King, there's nothing wrong with the procedure. I think that it's been handled properly. We just need to reduce that procedure to a written, a formal written policy. That's the only requirement. We just need for it to be written down. And then within that, specify that each time is allowed a minimum of ten minutes. And so that's what state law requires, is the minimum of ten minutes. And so my question to, to mayor and council is, do you want to allow more than ten minutes, or do you want to set it at a ten minute, I mean, a ten minute limit? Because it's, I mean, it's up to council.
I will, personally, I don't think we need to go more than ten minutes. I think if, if I'm out here and I'm talking to you guys, and if I, I got a point, I should be able to make my point within the ten minutes, you know what I mean? And it, and like, as Gilmore mentioned about, Matt Fairclough, you know, the hesitation part, you know what I mean? I'm sort of patting my feet, so, so, so the bottom line is that, due process, you know, we do what due process. And like, as long as we stay, and we, we, that's why we got you, as long as we stay within boundaries, I think it'll be all right. Can't nobody come back and say, if we transparent, they can't say, well, I didn't get my ten minutes, but we, we made notation, and that's what we established, and that's what we accept.
Yes, sir.
I think there's a couple of things, Ms. Newby, if you correct me if I misstate this, is that one of the things we have not been doing is allowing a rebuttal. And my understanding is that is something that, is that something we have to do, or is that something that we as a council would allow somebody to do? Because it's ten minutes for, ten minutes against, and if there were, and several of these, as I read through them, the person who was presenting the proposition, if they didn't use up their entire ten minutes, they could come back and rebut whatever the people who were in opposition of that, to use up the remaining part of their ten minutes. And so we have historically not done that. We've historically, if you go back and think about the apartment complex, now those ran a lot longer than ten minutes, and so.
But they didn't have one rebuttal in that, though.
Well, there was an attempt.
Okay, okay, okay.
But we don't have, we don't have a formal policy, and I think what she's, she's wanting us to do is make sure that we have a formal policy that's in place, and that formal policy is printed, and it is available at every one of our meetings. Is that not correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And if you look back at the copy of the statute that you have, that being the thirty-six sixty-six five, it just specifies that such policies and procedures shall specify a minimum time period at hearings of proposed zoning decisions for presentation of data, evidence, and opinion by proponents of each zoning decision, and an equal minimum time period for presentation by opponents of each proposed zoning decision, such minimum time period to be no less than ten minutes per side. So that's the state minimum. As to the rebuttal, some of, you may read, some of them, some of the examples say that if the, the proponent or the petitioner forwarded the application wishes, hasn't used all of their ten minutes and wants to reserve some time for rebuttal, then in that case, that's what that council allowed. But they were still only allowing a total of ten minutes per side, because whatever, you just have to have an equal amount of time for each side.
Can, can that be stated, or like you said, both parties already set on the rebuttal? The person who rebutted, do they get ten minutes, like, like you were saying, only twenty minutes, you know, ten minutes for, ten minutes again? So within that range, the person who gonna rebut, he got to stay within that range. And I think that's what the mayor comes in to, to keep everybody minimized with what they need to do. That's what, that's what you think?
Yes, sir. May I answer this question first? I think that a proponent or a petitioner can present for eight minutes, and then say, you know, mayor and council, I would like to reserve my last two minutes for rebuttal. And then anyone against it can speak for ten minutes, and then the proponent could come back and use their, right, their last two minutes to respond to anything. But that's if, that's what council, mayor and council want to do, to allow that rebuttal.
I'm, I'm understanding. So let's just use the example of the apartments that were controversial. You had, I'm assuming, the, the owner or builder of the apartment complex, which they would present eight or ten minutes. What would happen if you had eight separate homeowners that wanted to address? Do they have to form a team and collectively just have ten minutes? How, how does that? I'm, if, if I don't know some of those homeowners, I may, I don't want them using my, my minutes, and then, then it's yours.
Well, historically, we've allowed anybody that wants to speak, to speak. And we, we never have had a, we never had said, we're gonna have a time limit that you can't speak. And, and that's worked well over the last ten years, but can get into long discussions. But we never have published our rules. They, they never have been, it's kind of been whatever was going on and.
Like, the, the school district has, if you come to the work session or to the, the big meeting at one o'clock, and you want to speak, you, you know that you have, I think, two minutes, and that's it.
And there's also rules in, in city, you know, government, that you have to apply before the meeting.
That's what you have to do.
And, and see, we've never have required that either. And so this is, we're starting to formalize those types, because if you read the one from Jefferson, it, under topic four, it says that the chairperson or mayor may allow the applicants three minutes each to address planning or city in a rebuttal of the issue. So each one of them will get three minutes. So it's really, what we're talking about now is it's up to the council as to what it is that you want to put in place that you're comfortable with. I would not recommend it as an ordinance. I would recommend it as a policy or.
Procedure.
Procedure for us to establish that we can articulate to the public that these are our minimum standards. Now, you've got a really good question. I, I, I don't know if, you know, historically, we've said we won't, we don't want to limit somebody, you know, because there might be a, you know, three minutes and you're done, they might not be able to articulate their position within three minutes, but so.
But you know, in that same case, I noticed that, since I've been here, that, going back to what I was saying, that if we got, say, a group of people's here, and I remember Matt Fairclough, what he doing, and said, nah, we don't want anybody to get up and repeat the same thing, you know what I mean? So that goes with going back to what you said, because that can happen, you know what I mean? And you, like, you made a good, valid point, and said, well, I want to say something, I want, you know, I want, I want to go and rectify that. I'm saying something, you know what I mean?
I'm for it.
That's right. So that's the concept. So if we establish what we need to, and then they, so we got to let them know, so when they actually come into the meeting, they'll know the procedure, what we done. That's where we're going, right?
Yes. If I may, I would, I would recommend to you all that, number one, you can look at all this stuff all you want, but the primary thing, I think, is just, okay, you just do what you're comfortable with, which is what you're already doing, okay? Second thing, it says a minimum, so you have in there a minimum, but you don't put a maximum on that, because that'll kill you politically. One, one of the real values we've had with the city of Perry is, we don't restrict the people from coming in. Now, you can have a deal about, well, no, we're not gonna repeat all that type of stuff, but, you know, Dr. Albrecht has, like Mr. King said, a very excellent point. People are showing up, and they expect the opportunity to have something to say because it is a public hearing. And I have found in my experience, particularly with the city government, although on the county side too, they don't like to hear that they have to sign up ahead of time, like some organizations do appear. They don't like to hear that they only have three minutes, or whatever the case may be. And they sure don't want to hear if you, and we're moving away from, from the apartment deal. I know how, remember, we had the possible rezoning over on Chinaville, and, and all of us, all the Chinaville residents all showed up. Well, understandably so, we're not gonna tell them, or anybody. You know, when you have that many folks that show up, they want to express something, you see what I mean? So I think you could say that, yes, you'll have the minimum for each side. Now, the other thing I would strongly suggest is, you don't allow any of this rebuttal, which historically we have not done. You know, when it's time for the pros, the pro people speak whatever they want. When it's time for the cons, the con people speak whatever they want. And however ever long it takes, you know, until basically everybody's done, or, just like you're talking with Mr. Fairclough, when it obviously gets repeated, like they're on the fifth time about traffic. You know, then you say, you still have a right to speak, but we're aware of the, you see what I mean? So you can't control the topic rather than whether the individual can speak. But you don't have the rebuttal, because my experience is, you have going back and forth. You know, you may remember, we've seen some of that type of stuff. That's not why, I don't believe your traffic state, all that type of stuff.
Yeah, we had that happen during the apartment.
Right. But, but you don't allow that, however, you do allow council members to ask questions of either side or whatever.
For clarification.
For clarification, or, you know, whatever the case may be.
You will have that opportunity after they make their case, to act, question as much as you want for clarification and better understanding of their position, and, and that might bring up other things that people want to share. But one of the things that we, we did do was we asked people not to repeat, and oftentimes people just want to be registered that I'm for this. So they're allowed to get up and give their name and address, and I am for, or I'm against this, and so they're part of the record. They don't have anything to add, but they do want their time to, to speak, and so.
Should we have that written in our procedure, that the mayor or chair reserves the right to request any limitation on repetitive statements?
You can.
No, I, I think you definitely should, so.
That's right.
You know, somebody comes and says, well, wait a minute, I'm not talking about traffic even though the last seven people talked about. Well, no, and here's our, which. Well, no, and here's our, which goes back to Brooks, I'm a white hat, here's what our procedures are for the public hearing.
I agree that there shouldn't be any verbiage of rebuttal in whatever, you know, that...
I just beg to take it for that.
Over the years, we, we try to control that, and some people gonna jump up and try to do it anyway. So, if we, if we make sure we don't put that in the policy, then we have some control. We never have had it written down, and it's time to put it down. Because I have seen, over the years, some people, some subjects, that they want to go on and on and on and on and on, and then three people behind them want to say the same thing. Sometime, we have had people that had something else they wanted to say, but it still went right back to, it's either about the traffic, or I don't want it in this area, and this is why I don't want it in this area, whatever the subject may have been. So, I can appreciate the fact that we don't have a rebuttal on this.
I agree. I think that, I think we've all come to consensus that ten-minute minimum, we don't, well, both sides will get a minimum ten minutes, and, and then we won't put a maximum, we'll just let the people talk as they will. But we will also put in there, as I understand, what I'm being recommended is that the presiding officer, whoever that is, the chairperson or the mayor, would have the right to limit the discussion on repetitive topics.
Yes.
What else would you like to see in that? Any recommendations?
Well, there might be generic statement that you can repreach in zoning meeting, like, you know, what we just discussed here, like, two or three sentences.
Yep.
Other than that, audience...
And I have a question of Brooke about that.
Another rule.
Should there be a preamble to, you know, I go through and do the preamble about, this is a public hearing under OCGA, yuck, 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 you know, and type thing and, and all, and everybody, and here, should there be a preamble to that for a public hearing?
As to the policies and procedures for conducting the hearing?
Or just say that the policies and procedures are available at the back of the room?
I just say, I think, just say that they're available for the public. Cause we, I mean, that's all the law requires, is that they be printed and available for, um, distribution to the general public.
And that too, huh?
Yes, sir.
And some people want to see them, and some people won't.
That's true.
We'll have them available at every meeting. Same thing with planning and zoning, they'll have to have them available to anywhere we conduct a public hearing.
Mm-hmm. And as always, it needs to be reader-friendly for everyone. We have had problems where people didn't say they cannot understand something, but it, but Brooks gonna make sure it's very simple, so they will understand what it is without a problem.
Anything else that anybody would like to add on this topic relative to our zoning procedures? Mr. Wood, anything additional?
Yes.
Cause you guys have a, more public meet hearings than we do, so...
Well, I would assume that this is going to apply to the informational hearing as well.
I would think so, yes.
So, even though it's not a official public hearing, but, yes. I think that, um, yeah, just keep in mind that it will apply to both you and the...
Mr. Gilmore, additional thoughts or comments?
Uh, I can't think of any right now, other than I would recommend that, you know, based on the discussion, that the staff comes back with a resolution laying out these type of things for you to take a look at, and then you can decide if that's appropriate or not, or if there's some other type of change or something that's missing. But I think primarily going back to Mr. King's point, uh, with the input you had here, it's mostly going to be just putting down what you all have been doing, you know, for
Everybody satisfied with that? Well, staff will come forward with a recommended, uh, resolution for us to pass outlining our policies and procedures relative to that.
You know, leaving this point to another point next, but, careful thoughts for everybody else, because we kind of in, and we want to continue to have...
We do, and we will, I'm sure. Thank you.
Well said, Billy.
And everybody was curious as to why we suspended our meeting last night. Eights, and three C eight is the establishment of a pauper burial policy. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. In honor of LSU's fine triumph last night, which is one of the reasons the meeting was suspended, uh, this needs to be deferred. We need to, some other data's come up, so we need to incorporate that or review that.
Okay. We, we shall table this one and bring it back up at another work session. Thank you. And speaking of short topics, item three C nine is the establishment of a schedule for construction of a new city hall and a municipal court. Mr. Gilmore?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, in your data for the board, that you have a memo from me proposing a process to be used for the construction of a new city hall and a municipal court building. Just to go back, particularly for the two new council members, these two projects have previously been approved by council. Um, and so, we recommend that council approve the below process, which is, uh, to complete a basic survey of each site that is actually going on right now, but that information is needed to go for the next step. Number two would be prepare a general outline of project expectations, such as estimated square footage, basic requirements. Most of that has already been done. You may remember, council directed a survey going out to all the users and all that type of stuff. Step three would be to advertise for concept plans from architects and/or engineers, uh, where they will provide a layout, exterior design, you know, basic concept type of deal. Uh, once that, uh, those proposals are provided, that you would provide public comment period and hold at least two public hearings to obtain citizen recommendations, either here or maybe as a follow-up on, uh, the points you talked about later, uh, yesterday, some town hall meetings, you know, around the city, you know, provide the opportunity for different areas in the city for, but anyway, have the different types of designs and everything, uh, from the different architects. And then after that, council would decide on the general design concept and selects an architect. Now, that would not necessarily lock you to one design. It could be that you like this aspect, everybody with me, you know, this portion, whatever the case may be, or based on the feedback. And then from there, and based on the discussion, you wind up selecting an architect. Uh, once that's been done, or while that process is going on, uh, we also would recommend to select proposals for qualifications from construction management companies, firms, or partnerships. You may remember, we've had to do that on almost all our projects, because the regular bidding just does not work for these bigger type of projects. Uh, you would select a construction management company, uh, and then whoever the architect you selected and the construction management company that you select would prepare the cost estimates and the preliminary plans. You determine your funding sources for the project, and once that's determined, then the projects are authorized to begin. Uh, one of the slight differences is that you may hear from some of the people in the field and everything, that it might be faster if you have a construction management firm that also has already, they have selected an architect, you know, to handle that project or the engineers. I, as the administration, would not recommend that, because these are two, particularly the new city hall, one big, major project. And I think it's important for you all, as well as the citizens of Perry, to see, not be locked into one particular architect's plan or concept because of the construction company, but you all have an opportunity, there will be immense, there already is, there will be immense interest in this project and people coming in. And the opportunity for you to select and see the greatest variety and interest in what seems to fit, I think, would be the best way to go. Uh, I also think we'll also have a lot of participation and interest from different construction management firms, and then you can judge on that, and then, you know, be ready to go.
Questions relative to the proposed process? You know, we're keeping in mind that you're not making any commitments whatsoever, you're just giving the staff the approval to start the process, moving forward to provide you with the information that you'll need in the future to make a decision.
I think the ten things that was given, that I could, is the right move that we need to make, and the step we, we see before we move to, you know, and I think that's a good thing.
And I, I, I see this as a step-by-step process.
It is.
Uh, as they develop information, they'll bring it back to us, we'll review it again before we go on to the next step. So, it'll be just a continuous review process. Again, these things take years, not months, to do, and we have to get started on this and moving it forward. Do we have concurrence to accept this as is proposed by the staff?
Yes.
Mr. Hunt?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. You have approval to move forward with your recommendation. Item four is, is that right? Item four is the council. We're done with three C, according to the schedule I have. There's nothing else past nine as a, okay, very good. Item four are council member items. Mr. Hunt? Mr. Jones?
Can I just want to ask one more time about the lights at Lake Forest? Is there any update on that?
Yes, there was an update. Matthew Ditten with Flint Energies came back with a response stating that a brighter light for the entrance was not recommended by Flint Energies because of the complaints they've had in other, uh, areas. Uh, he recommended that the four hundred watt LED was as bright as, as he would go. Um, at that, at that point, um, I'm just kind of waiting on the, go ahead, and I think we will be moving forward with that, uh, provided the city manager agrees.
Yeah.
I'll respond back to the, get an invoice sent to us, and that'll be...
Awesome. Thank you, James. Let's see how long it is before people complain the light's not bright enough. I'm sorry, let me back up. I understand, particularly Flynn's point about the deal, about the question on the lights, okay? I'm not, and we'll try that, okay? But one of the big differences out there is that light is, that goes in, it's got to reach across that proposed right-of-way for the, wider right-of-way to get over to the street, to, to light up the intersection. Because any of those subdivisions or development that's coming in on Langston Road, they have to give us additional right-of-way for the widening of the road eventually. Everybody with me? So, you know, the, you'll have the subdivision street that comes out, and it's not the usual type of deal, but where the street comes in, and then you have the house, you know, pretty close to the corner, you've got a, a setback there, which is why we originally talked about having a brighter light up there. But we can give that, give that a try.
I'll move forward.
That's all I have.
Mr. Brown, Bruce?
I have still been, um, asked on a regular basis, what are we gonna do about that road that runs behind Swift Pike, um, since that new motel is coming? The road is bad, um, and how soon will we be, um, getting that done? Or will we get it done?
Uh, sorry, done like being resurfaced?
Yeah.
It is on the next, uh, priority list, um, coming up.
Twenty twenty, isn't it?
Twenty twenty.
LMIG?
Yes. It's on this year's.
Okay. Okay, and then I'll have something to tell them, cause it, it is very bumpy in, back there, and it looks bad.
There's, the contract will expire in October. There's, uh, they have a window to work pretty much between March and October, May, May and October on that. So, sometime in that period, that will be complete. There's no definite date on that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. King?
Yes, sir, I have, um, one of the residents on, um, Inverness would, is very concerned about the speeding and the traffic. I just want to be able to, you know, respond to this person, and I, there are just questions that I have about that. Um, there's one speed limit sign there now on the road. As soon as you turn onto Inverness, there's a speed limit sign. Um, I, I didn't know if it ever, if ever there was a chance for a second one. I didn't know. Also, um, I didn't know what the procedure was for a speed bump on that road. I don't know if, if this person would even want that, but, um, I didn't know what the procedure was for that. And also, even one of those little temporary machines that sits on the side that tells your speed as you go by. I feel like it would be helpful, and it's probably, well, I would say, but I think it might be helpful if we responded in some way with something tangible that needed. We, we've done this to try to address that for you, and it might not make any difference in the long run, but I would like to at least be able to say, we discussed it, and this is what we feel like we can do that might help. And I'm not sure that I know what all the things are that might help. So, those were just the ones that I came up with, so, um...
Mr. Gilmore?
Number one, since you brought that up, I guess Major Phelps has already made a note about that, so the...
Thank you.
Well, I mean, that, that's how it's done. Okay? Then the notice goes up there. Uh, speed bumps require seventy-five percent of the property owners to sign off and agree to that. The reason for that is, they all say they want speed bumps until the speed bumps go in. You know, they can't sleep, it's too much noise. I mean, you all have been through that before, so that's why we require that petition.
I don't particularly want it there either, but, you know, um, I just wanted to be able to say, so, your note of that means what exactly? That you would, what?
That I will get, uh, more information from you tomorrow or this afternoon.
Okay.
And I will go out to that site, and we'll look at the signs, see if we need any more signs. If we do, we'll make, uh, place an order for them, and we will, I'll talk to you more about the speed bump and requirement for that. We do have a radar sign that we can put up. Right now, it's being used in another neighborhood, Al 127, the same problem. And soon as that, uh, sign get available, we'll put it on this street.
Well, I feel sure we could put it in her yard, on that issue.
That's what we normally do.
Has there been, um, an increase, or there's a perceived increase in volume with the tying in to Legacy Park?
Honestly, now, I go out in and out through Legacy a lot. I go into public for my house, I go through Legacy and go out. So, I think I can't be the only person that's chosen to use that route, and, so I don't know that it's any more increased.
Increase or decrease on that?
Honestly, for the people on Legacy, unless they wanted to come downtown, it'd be out of their way to come on Inverness.
Yeah, I was just curious as to what, what's causing the people to feel like that people are speeding or more traffic or whatever.
I cannot...
It's, it's classified as a collector now. We ran through, ran the last analysis, it just, and probably has been for a while, but it's just a lot of traffic. Uh, although I think a number of people try to avoid it because of the problem getting out on making road.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
You know, depending what part of the day it is.
I have one other item, and that was, um, um, one of the constituents in our area walk a lot from what our, this neighborhood is over near the high school, and they come walking downtown, they come walking down Highway forty-one, a long expanse of sidewalk, and there are not any public trash cans along that way. It's not something that would have ever occurred to me, but, you know, they've got their baby there in a stroller, and they're, they walk a lot, and he, he said, you know, there, there are never any trash cans along that way. So, I'm just letting you know that that, there are people that would like to see that. Yes, sir.
At least so far, unless council directly specifies, we do not put trash cans out on sidewalks or park trails and everything, because they wind up being a huge litter generator. They're a problem to be serviced, you have people who come by there, they almost make it, they don't, you know, it starts becoming a collection point where people from all over dumping trash. We've tried it out, uh, I think some of the council may remember, like around some of the convenience stores, because of litter problem and everything, litter problem still continues, so we...
I would like to...
Yeah, so we just stay away. We encourage, uh, residents, particularly if you're out with a stroller, whatever the case may be, take a little plastic bag, put your litter stuff in it, and then drop it off. One of the things for a lot of the neighborhoods and everything on your walk is somebody will have their toe around, to just put in your toe.
I don't suggest that they use anybody else's trash can, I'll just say...
That's come back and say, you said it.
Well, we, I mean, that, it, it comes up periodically, and then very shortly afterward... Well, we, I mean, that, it, it comes up periodically and then very shortly afterwards, you all are back telling us, get that thing out of there because it's become a mess and neighbors are complaining, so.
Captain Phelps is gonna give a speed ticket, so by little bling.
I don't make sure they understand who they're blaming.
Dr. Albright, do you have anything?
Just one thing, you know, traffic light seems to be a big issue. I talked to you guys about the long traffic light on Sam Nun on the exit, I said it by and I know it's a DOT. And the gentleman was here the other night that said, uh, Bob, uh, and wanted to know about blinking light and you mentioned it was a DOT. Is there more we can say? Is there a Department of Transportation site in Perry? Or would, I mean, I just feel like it's just, it just stops, you know, so it's a Department of. If I want to be a little more helpful to them, is there a phone number or I don't, you know, just they hit a brick wall?
Well, given the request from the gentleman at House in Springs.
Right.
We have written a request, a formal request to DOT asking them to do a study. Now, they will respond to that and they'll tell us why they will do it or why they will not do it there at three forty-one and airport extension. So that, that's the formal process we go through. Yes, there is a GDOT office right here in, right off the Marshallville Highway and they've got a very large presence here. And so back, what's the old, what was that used for years ago?
State Patrol.
State, old state patrol office.
Okay.
And that's where they're headquartered.
I'll just have a little more ammo.
And we, we'll also have Chad send each of you the contact information from DOT that you can pass on and everything. And the regional guy too. Yeah, following up on the mayor's thing, they can contact him, it won't do any good. You know, DOT does not respond generally unless two things happen. One is that you have a series of major automobile accidents as far as DOT is ranking it by number of deaths in an accident. Or the second thing is that you have the local government send in a request, which we always do every single time, you know, when it comes up, either you have been contacted individually and let us know, we'll send it out, or like you have one of the citizens coming in and asking for that. The standard process is they say, thank you very much, we'll send it over to somebody to study somewhere and then about six or eight months later, is that about right, Chad?
That's about right.
We get, we ask them what's going on and they say, oh, it's just about done. And then another two months goes by and they come back and they say, doesn't meet our criteria. For example, kind of going back on Inverness, we've been round and round with DOT for at least the last eighteen years about trying to get a traffic control device there and they just, they won't do it. One of the things, if I may, one of the primary things which I think is very important because we're having issues also on the Main Street and Washington traffic light and then the one on Carroll and all that type of stuff. It's, it's very important, I think, for us to keep in mind, although it doesn't do you any good with your constituents, I realize that. But the primary thing Georgia DOT is interested in is moving traffic through. That's, that's what they're interested in. So if you take like the state route on Commerce Street, the primary thrust from DOT is to get that traffic through. And their other primary controlling devices are going to be other cross-state routes. For example, Perry Parkway and Houston Lake Road. That's, that's their primary thing that they're interested in. And any of the other type of traffic lights or control devices, particularly if it's not one of their routes like Washington or Ball Street now, those type of things, they, they have a low priority compared to the traffic flow. And they will also get in and possibly restrict any other type of lights you have that impacts. And that was the problem, remember on Washington and Main, because of the distance that you have there. So I know that didn't help you very much, but just to give you some background, that's, that's their thinking, so. And it's hard to get them to change. Because I'm, I've changed my driving habits because I will not get off at Sam Nun. If you get off at Sam Nun, you need to take a right and then take a left, you know, because it, it'll be, you know, it'll be thirty-five or forty seconds there. But they're gonna keep that traffic moving on Sam Nun and on three forty-one and.
Definitely do.
So it's just. One of, one of the other things too, I know it's not necessarily the best answer, but going back at the exit of Sam Nun and I seventy-five, I am anticipating very soon DOT is coming back with a study on that because I have been amazed about the backup we're getting on those exits now.
Yeah.
I mean, not even just waiting on the light, but traffic's starting to back up. Now, that's one of those things that does get DOT's attention and they'll come in and start planning that. But again, that's all part of their, not their deal. The other thing we also do, Dr. Albright, is there is the RATS, regional training thing that DOT planning thing for traffic and everything, we have our representatives that go there, we bring these issues up with them all the time, so. Nothing else this evening? Thank you. Ms. Gilmore, nothing for us this evening? Nothing? Mr. Smith?
No, sir.
Ms. Newby?
Do we need to discuss the subordination again? With my son trying to plug?
Can we do that? Can we do that?
I guess so.
Okay. Yeah? Okay. You want to add that to the agenda at this point, huh? Before we go into the department heads? Okay. We, if you will allow us, we have a addition to the agenda that, that came to our attention this afternoon that we would like to add. It's relative to the sale of Westwood Trailer Park. And so we've been in discussions today with the buyer's attorney as well as the Bank of Perry. So Ms. Newby, would you want to describe what our options or is that going to be Mr. Gilmore? Either between us or. See, that's why they're up here.
You may recall, you may recall that the city currently has a lien that's been established through code enforcement and filing a lawsuit against the property owner for code violations that haven't been corrected. And that lien continues to accrue on a daily basis. There was a, or is a potential purchaser for that property. They had approached the city to see if the city would be willing to work out a judgment enforcement agreement whereby the city would agree to not foreclose its lien or require its lien be paid in exchange for them bringing the property up to code. And so that was council directed for us to provide that agreement, which we drafted and presented for the purchasers' consideration. Because instead of getting the lien paid off, the property would be brought up to code and everything that y'all wanted done to the property within the regulations would be satisfied. Today, however, I received a call from the closing attorney that the lender for the transaction, which is the Bank of Perry, has indicated that they would not be willing to subordinate their lien. They would require a subordination agreement from the city that they have to have a first lien on the property in order to finance the project. And so that's currently where, where it's left. It's for this, for mayor and council to decide how you wish to proceed at this point with the judgment enforcement agreement, just asking for the lien to be paid out of settlement proceeds or agreeing to subordinate its lien to that of the lender, maybe in conjunction with executing a judgment enforcement agreement. There may be some other creative options that Mr. Gilmore may have for you to consider, but that's where we are.
Well, some, you know, Ms. Newby covered the major ones. I think the, the primary thing for you all to be thinking about is how, how strong or how important is it to have the new owner or the new owner's successors make the improvements out at the, at the site? Previously with council, it was a very important issue because it had dragged on for such a long time, which goes back to why you had the requirement in the lien, the lien amounts are filed in the original, original purpose. You could come back and say that, well, let me back up. Experience indicates that if you subordinate, is that it the term? The lien, then from a practical standpoint, you're basically writing it off. You're not, you're not gonna get anything. In other words, if, if the owner fails, was out of business, whatever the case may be, the financial institution gets the first claim on whatever and then we're the second one and usually there isn't anything that's, that's left. So we're up. In order to, and, and as was mentioned, the purpose of all these liens was to make sure that improvements that the current property owner originally agreed to would be put in and they never were. So therefore you could say, all right, fine, we will subordinate our lien or replace our lien by the owners have to put up a commercial letter of credit at whatever that lien amount is or whatever. And that gives you the instrument to ensure that if the improvements aren't made, then you just draw off that letter of credit and pay to have that work done. That probably would be an issue, I would think, you know, with the owner and the financial institution. Second thing is Ms. Newby had indicated, you can just say, fine, and you'll have to pay off that lien amount and that could be an issue relative to the, the sale. You could say, all right, fine, we'll subordinate our lien and not do any more and then the owner can go ahead and make the improvements and all that type of stuff you hope. Or if the owner doesn't, then we can go back and start the process again that we did before. And as you may remember, that's a long timeframe that, that drags on and that was one of the really big concerns that, that council had. Another possible option is you can say, all right, fine, we will, in essence, just, okay, write off the lien, but then you will also back out of some of the other items that you agreed to do for that site. For example, with the improvements, the fire marshal said that there had to be a number of fire hydrants, or at least one, I think. More than. Yeah, installed in that park to meet current code. We originally on the city's part, interested in moving the project along, said, well, okay, fine, we'll take care of that. You can come back and say, no, we're not gonna do that. You may remember, we also had issues, I think, about a master meter and they had talked about not wanting that. If they, if you give it up, you may come back and say, okay, fine. And as we're gonna treat this project just like we would any other type of manufactured home park, which would be that there'd be a master meter that would go in and then the owner would have to do the billing through the rents, you know, whatever the process is to collect that. Or you could just say, it's important enough in the general interest of the city that a new owner come in and everything, like I said, I think before, and you just, you just don't do anything and you see what happens.
What's the lien amount?
I, I do not know.
It's over a hundred and seven thousand.
Oh, one oh seven?
Hundred and seven thousand. And, and keep in mind that these are fines.
Right.
That we got a judgment because the person was not complying with, so we went to municipal court, the judge found them guilty and then assessed a hundred dollars a day fine during the entire time that they were non-compliant. And as Ms. Newby said, it continues today to compile a hundred dollars a day.
So, so there's a purchaser that wants to purchase this from the current owners, but there's two lien holders or we're the second lien holder.
Well, we're the first. We would be the first lien holder. They're asking us to subordinate our liens against their lien, lending to the people owners. So they're asking us to take a second position where they know we're in the first position, correct? As it is to.
Well, I don't, I don't know without a title exam if we're first currently, but the way you described it, asking us to take a second position to the lender is correct.
I have a question.
But you mentioned one thing about we could go ahead and take the money out of the sale.
So normally whenever there's a sale of real property, if there are liens against the property, the liens have to be paid out of the, the purchase price so that the purchaser is taking the property free and clear of any liens. So that, that may or may not kill the deal if, we don't know what the purchase price is, but if the purchaser has agreed to a two hundred thousand dollar purchase price, but they have to pay over a hundred thousand to pay off this lien, then the seller may not be willing to sell for that.
Well, what is the, 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 the best and the easiest way to get this done? I have had a headache for years about this piece of property over here. I mean, it is a eyesore coming into Perry from, from the fairgrounds. We, you know, if we could just do something with that piece of property over there to make it work for us as well as the residents, then we need to do whatever we need to do. But what can we do that will be the right thing to do to fix this? Because this has been going on.
There's nothing there.
Going on before you, when I got on. And it, and, and I drove over there a couple of days ago and it looks terrible. I mean, I didn't think it could look any worse, but it does.
It's bad over there?
Yeah.
But, you know, you, you ask, you know, the, the easiest thing that you can do is subordinate to the bank and take a second position, which basically you lose all your leverage and it's, you're making the decision at that point in time that says, we're willing to take the risk on the new owner that they're gonna do what they say they're going to do because we're not gonna have any leverage to do that.
Well, we can't, we don't have any, any way we can have some leverage with the new owner? Lee?
No. We, we've already, we've already tried that route. There's been a series of negotiations and everything and it was our understanding on talking with the owner's representative and everything that this process, so they wouldn't have to pay the lien amount right off on the sale, was that this agreement was satisfactory to them. And now it's come back and they're saying, well, no, it's, no, it's not. Or their financing group. Yeah, but let me back up though. The financing group has been involved in all these discussions. This isn't like just somebody brand new coming out of California. You know, this financial institution has been involved from the get-go relative, you know, to this property. And that's why, kind of echoing Phyllis's point, it's very, very frustrating because we keep getting to these points and then nothing happens or a fall back. And then think we're doing more than, and it falls back. And, and the result, similar to what Phyllis has said, is that the actual park itself is just getting worse and worse and worse.
Well, what, what is the new owner's dream or what are they gonna do differently? Have you seen any, are they gonna knock, take the trailers out and put apartments in there or something?
Mr. Wood, I'd be best to answer that.
Mr. Albright and members of council, the person that we've been talking to since last, I think about August, has presented their plan to us. Their intent is to clean up the trailer park, getting out all of the dilapidated trailers that are there now. I think there's an agreement between the purchaser and the current owner on who's doing what, but the, the purchaser is interested in them all getting removed and he's willing to, from what he's telling me, he's willing to do that. And he's willing to, from what he's telling me, he's willing to do that. He is willing to, he has been, we've talked to him about what the improvements are that, that we expect to be made, which, which are repaving all of those roads that are in there, fixing the drainage issue, and providing parking pads for each of the, of the lots or as they, as they get trailers put onto them. He has, so that's what he's willing to do. And he's, what he's telling us, that we've talked to, is that he wants to get that done quickly because he cannot then move forward with putting new trailers in there or new mobile homes or manufactured homes in there and uplifting that, that site with all of this mess there, so.
So, so is it safe to assume that nearly a hundred percent of the mobile homes there are people rental? Because there's some that are still home on, people.
There are, yes, there are some homes in there that people own and live there. Some that people own that aren't the landowner and rent them out as well. He has indicated that he has talked to a number of those people. He wants to work with them to get them into a better home if their home is substandard or work with them to improve their home so that it fits the character that he's intending. I don't know all the details of how he's going to do that, but that's what his, his intent is to improve that, that trailer park and make it a safe, affordable place.
What's your gut feeling?
My gut feeling is that he's going to do what he's going to do, what he's saying he's going to do. The amount of money, and I don't know the exact number. You know, I heard some figures running, thrown around earlier that sounded like an awful lot of money to be putting in there to not really want to do anything. And then he mentioned the other day, seven figures. So he's got a lot of money going into this project to not be interested in doing anything to improve it, is what I see. That's my gut feeling, though.
If we subordinate our lien, that would presumably push the deal forward for the new owner. Am I correct in that understanding? If they do not, as Mr. Wood said, if they do not follow up with bringing it up to code, do we still retain the authority to take code enforcement action against them and find them as we did previously?
Well, it's what Mr. Gilmore said, you have to start the process.
Process over again.
Right.
You wouldn't be able to keep adding.
Keep adding to what we already have, but start it back.
My, my understanding is that that judgment is against a totally different party.
Right.
And that lien would still exist there, but it wouldn't accumulate as it is today, is how I understand it. Because our agreement says it's going to stop.
Right.
At that point. And then this amount of money is going to be leaned against that property. But if they don't do anything and it stays in the same condition, then you're going to have to start the whole judgmental, you know, process together. Code enforcement, going to municipal court, getting a judgment, that kind of stuff, so.
But it's money we've not spent, it's just fines that we've levied on.
Exactly.
It's not a budget item.
It's not a budget.
That we put money over here.
It's only, it's only leverage to help try to get them to do what, you know, you would like for them to do to improve that site. So there's the risk associated with it, that the new owners will or will not do what they say.
Really not a risk, though, is it? I mean, as far as us losing money, because we never had it to begin with.
That, that's right. I mean, the other thing, too, is you know if the sale doesn't go through, nothing's going to happen.
People getting the same thing.
We don't see any hope of anything changing on that. And the property, the property has been on the market for a while.
It did.
Want to fight for him? I've been praying and looked like we could keep right down south and pray. But, um, I just, and we all on the same page about this trailer park. I just don't think it's fair to, to, to our citizens to have to live that way in this day and time. And we have fought, folks, you all know how hard we have been fighting this for years and years and years. So I just want something to happen.
So do, do, do I have a recommendation from any member of council as to how you would like to proceed or advise Mr. Gilmore and staff to proceed tomorrow on this outstanding lien?
It's not inherently thrilling, but my recommendation would be to subordinate.
I feel the same way, because, I mean, it's not like we kept the money anyway. You know, it's just out there in Lola Land, just out there.
If we do this, is there a precedent? Has there been a? Have we stood to our guns on those things before? Before?
No.
Well, maybe I don't understand it. Well, Ms. Newby, if we do subordinate and say we're going to get our money at closing.
No, we won't. We'll, we'll still have a lien. We'll just be, we'll have a second.
What, what, what was it you said?
So one option would be to say, we're not going to subordinate our lien. If you want to close the property and have our lien released, you have to pay us the fines that are due in full.
When the, when the.
When they.
When the action take place.
Yes, sir.
I have a likely counterdeal.
That way they go back?
But the rea, the reality is that they will, they will not close.
They may not, they may not.
Well, we, we, well, we can go either way. We can say we're not going to subordinate to you and say we want first position and they're not going to close. I think that, you know.
Might, might do strange things when it comes down to it. They, they won't get that off their books, too.
Do you think it's possible that, since we said the Bank of Perry had been involved in it from the get-go, talking about it, and now all of a sudden they changed their position? Do you think they're just, I don't know how to state this, but do you think they're just trying to, not, well, that's not the word I want to use, but just try to take a hard line and see if we won't fall back?
I don't know. I have no, have no way of knowing what their thoughts are.
But that was the case, they've been involved all along and then they changed their mind.
That's what's been stated.
Probably they are just doing their due corporate protection.
And if we didn't, then we don't really know that they wouldn't.
That's correct.
As a chance.
But it's. It's highly, highly likely because of all of the issues that are involved with it is that this owner will say, no, can't, can't go ahead and do like Mr. Jones was talking about. Like Mr. Albritton says, if you say, okay, fine, you know, we'll take second place and everything. It really hasn't, there's no loss to the city or financial standpoint or anything. There is the opportunity for the new owner to go. And if the new owner does not proceed, then we go back and start the process again. You know, then maybe that timeframe, we haven't really lost, you know, anything on that.
Because lien's going to be there.
Right.
We can start the process up.
Right. And there, there may be some other type of things you can do, you know, we'll have to check and make sure. But for example, you don't issue any more water meters out there? You're saying, so restrict whatever their customer thing is until.
That's what we're going to do, is that in fact?
We, we do except for those who are existing.
You know, for, for whatever reason, they decided to move away. We're not letting anybody else come in.
Correct. That's correct.
But you're speaking of the new, if in fact we subordinate our note to the Bank of Perry and we have a second position. One of the leverage points we have with the new owner is if they don't do what they said they're going to do, we don't issue any new. And we'll continue the process that we're going through right now, that nothing new will go in out there until they do it.
Right.
And going back to what Mr. Wood said, it's like I talked to the guy himself, too, that he's wanting to be able to do something. You know, I mean, it depends, going back to what we're talking about now, that he, he want to do it quickly. You know what I mean? And he got placed all those outside, that he done developed and done, done the work.
If he's still interested in getting started, he might be moving forward sometime.
I think he got some money, too.
We will set a precedent, or are we going to back down?
Well, I'm sure somebody can come in and say that, but the reality is no. This is one particular set of circumstances and you're making what you, whichever way you wind up going, which you believe is in the collective best interest of the city. You know, to me, it's, you know, a lot of times it's like a rezoning case. You know, they'll say the president or whatever, you hear all the facts and everything, then you make your decision on whatever it is you want to do, and then that's what it is.
It needs to be cleared up.
It does.
Whatever we have to do.
Well, if that's the case, if it's whatever we have to do, here's how I look at it. Westwood Trailer Park's been banned for a long time and somebody wants to purchase it and picks it up.
Right.
Period.
Yeah.
And that should be hallelujah.
Amen, brother.
Did you get a second to your motion?
Well, it's not a motion.
Not a motion to make a motion?
It was just a recommendation, we can't vote in.
Oh, yeah.
I was just getting a, a recommendation to get concurrence. I'm trying to get to some concurrence here with the group that, you know, you, you can, you could, at this point in time, say that you're comfortable with subordination of the loan, but you would ask that Ms. Newby and Mr. Gilmore negotiate the best deal they can on behalf of the city and if coming away with the Bank of Perry tomorrow.
I'm going to agree.
Are you agreeable with that?
Mine?
Yeah.
Yeah. Provided Ms. Newby's agree.
Is there a big hole, the drainage, where they just?
So.
What do you, what's it?
We're set, we've got.
Do we need for Mr. Wood to lay out everything that has to be done to let new owner?
Yes, that's already been done. They have that in writing. That, that's already been translated to there.
So he understands what we expect of him?
Exactly, everything.
Okay.
There's been an ongoing negotiation and discussion about that.
So if he goes in and pays X number of dollars for it and he finds out, hey, this didn't go work and he falls through, we're not going to bend on what we want done to the property. To, in other words, to save him another hundred thousand dollars in repairs.
No, well, well, they will be, you know, the same type of code enforcement will be taken against them that's taken against the current property owner.
Okay.
It would be, it would be similar to a developer that comes in with a subdivision and then doesn't comply with the requirements of the subdivision.
Very good.
Ms. Newby, do you have everything that you need to move forward tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Are you comfortable, Mr. Wood?
Very, thank you.
Okay, good.
Appreciate it.
We'll move forward tomorrow and see what can be negotiated at the best interest of the city. And it, it very well might end up that we subordinate that note. So everybody has a clear understanding that. I mean, Dr. Albritton's camp, that we've got somebody here willing to, you know, it's going to be better than what we've got. We know what we've got, we know what we dealt with for the, I've been on the council for 10 years and we've dealt with it all 10 years. And so if we have an opportunity to, to move this forward, we're going to take our opportunity again. Okay, thank you. Any, any other additional items that we need to add that I've overlooked that we've discussed today? Mr. Smith, anything?
No, sir.
All right. I think we've gotten to councillor items and manager, assistant city manager. City attorney. Item five is department head items. Ms. King, anything for us this evening?
No, sir.
Ms. Warren?
No, sir.
Mr. Swan?
No, sir.
Chief Parker?
Yes, Mayor, Mayor and Council, just one thing for information. This Thursday night, we'll be hosting, or Perry Fire Department will be hosting the Central Georgia Fire Chiefs Association at Station Two at six o'clock. So we'll be out there having a, having a, a meeting, so. Just if you see a bunch of fire chiefs in town, that's what they're here for.
So what do you, sir?
Uh, I do not know. I, I think it may be chicken.
Oh, chicken.
Thank you.
We'll speak to them if we see.
Have we put out any signs, say welcome for them? Will we be putting out any, anything to, like a banner or something that says welcome?
No, ma'am, not, not at this time. We can maybe put something on social media for them, but, yes, ma'am.
Only question about the weather?
I haven't looked at it, I don't know what, what the weather's going to do.
Something I did, so I didn't know.
Ms. Parker?
Yes, sir. Mayor and council, Tuesday, we are expecting a photographer to come in, starting at three o'clock, right before the pre-council meeting for updated headshots. Yes, I wanted to go ahead and warn you ahead of time. Each council member will be getting an updated professional photographer, excuse me, photograph, and then there will be a group photo as well. So spiffy up and, for Tuesday.
I just have to see what color my hair is, huh?
Yes, ma'am. You have a few days.
We were trying to give you plenty of notice. You can plan your wardrobe.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. And there again, we will have a group shot. Those pictures will be placed out on the wall outside. It'll be an updated picture of, you know, the council and the, our new city attorney, all of us together. And then we'll have individual shots that will go on the website as well as hanging out in the corridor there, so.
Yes, sir.
What, how we supposed to be?
It starts at three o'clock, so anytime from three o'clock on, when you get here before council.
What day is that?
Tuesday the 21st. It would be our next council.
It's a calendar invite, probably.
The photographer's going to be here at three o'clock, so if you want to come earlier and get it done, get it out of the way, and then we'll have a group picture made when everybody gets here. Mr. Smith, anything for fellow works?
No, sir.
Mr. McMurray?
No, sir.
Mr. Wood?
Nothing, ma'am, sir.
Major, anything from the police department?
Nothing, sir.
Thank you. I think that's everybody in the room. Got a lot of public participation tonight. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to move into executive session.
So executive?
The motions for the purpose of real estate. All in favor, please indicate by spraying your right hand. All right, we will move into executive session.